Good evening, councilors. I'd like to welcome you all to our January 24, 2023, meeting of the Gloucester City Council. My name is Val Gilman, and I am the president of the city council and your Ward Four city councillor. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council, and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call. If you're calling it on the phone, and you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. The city of Gloucester asserts that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender, identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as city councilors do not condone language that is discriminatory or offensive and will not accept it at city meetings. At this point, I'd like to introduce members of the council that are on the call and members of administration. Right now, I see Jason Grow at large, Scott Memard, Ward One, Council Tracy O'Neil, Ward Two, Jeff Worthy, Councillor at Large, Tony Gross, Councillor at Large, Sean Nolan, Ward Five city councillor and Vice President of the council. And I know that Jamie O'Hara is on the call, but I don't see him. Is he, is he on yet, Joanne? I don't see him.
He is not.
Okay, and I don't see Frank yet, but I introduced everyone else on the council? Yes, okay. So, members of city staff that I'd like to introduce include John Dunn, our CFO, Kenny Costa, our auditor, Jill Cahill, who is our CAO, Council Frank Majota just logged on, he is our Ward Three city councillor, welcome Frank. And let's see who else is on the call for administration. Of course, Joanne Sinos, who is our city clerk. And I think that is all, let me just see who's on the attendees, anyone that I should mention that's part of city staff. PM Toby, who is our Director of Communications and Constituent Services. So I think that's it, we have thirty-seven attendees listening in. So I'll ask our city clerk to announce the first order of business.
I believe you were going to make some announcements first.
Okay, I will do that, thank you. So I'd just like to announce that Public Hearing 2022-034, Loan Order 2022-009, loan authorization and the amount of nineteen million dollars for the Gloucester Police Station and Courthouse Facility renovation will be continued to the February 4, 2023 city council meeting. I'd also like to note that on February 14th, we're going to have a presentation at the beginning of the meeting on the 400th, and that's going to be coordinated with our tri-chairs Bruce Toby, Ruth Pino, and Bob Gillis. They're going to give us feel for ways that the city council can help advertise and help get involved with the 400th, which is exciting. I know Tony Gross went to the kickoff, if I'm not mistaken, and we look forward to hearing more about how we can get involved. So that will be at our next meeting on February 14th. Unfortunately, for those of you who were hoping to do something fun on Valentine's Day, you'll have to do something for breakfast or lunch, because for dinner, we're going to be on our meeting, so. Anyway, and at this, at this point in time, I'd like to ask that we do a moment of silence for someone very near and dear to us who has recently passed away. And after I read this, I'd like to ask that Councillor Nolan and Councillor O'Hara might want to say a few words, I don't quite hear, see Councillor O'Hara yet on the call, so. Paul Talbot, beloved husband of Ann Russo, passed away on Friday, January 20, 2023, at the Sea Coast Rehab in Gloucester, he was eighty-nine. Paul is a familiar face in our city, as he served as the former city manager in Gloucester from 1968 to 1976, and as the administrator for KETA from 1997 to 2018. He was a graduate of the Wharton School Business with a Masters in Public Administration, and he served in the Army and the Eighty-Second Airborne. He married Dorothy Mayberry in 1957, and they were married for thirty-five years until her death in 1992. Together, they raised their three children in the Magnolia home. Paul is survived by his wife, Ann, and his two daughters Kathleen Baron and Paula Rogers and son Bob, several grandchildren, and his precious great-grandson Remy Fulford, who he adored greatly, as well as his brother Rodney Talbot and sister McElaine Morgan. Paul always made you feel great when he was bumping into you in the streets. He was never shy to share his ideas on citywide issues. He was a man who truly loved our community and his family. Councilors, Councillor Nolan, would you like to add a few things? Because I know that you grew up with him closely, I'm Tracy, and I see your hands raised, Tracy.
Yeah, I just want to tell you that Councillor O'Hara is on, as an attendee, it looks like.
Okay, so Joanne, maybe you could bring Councillor O'Hara in? Okay. Councillor O'Hara is on the call now, so we have everyone on the city council here. So Councillor Nolan, why don't you say a few words, and then we'll ask Councillor O'Hara to say a few words as well.
Growing up around Magnolia with Paul Talbot was like a ritual. Everything had their ways of happening. Nothing happened in the community without Paul being involved with Dorothy, whether it was skating at West East Pond, ski trips out of the Magnolia Library, or just the everyday, you know, what are you doing? Or, you know, does your father know what you're doing? You know, he was just a great man, a great leader, and he's going to be sadly missed in our community. And I think this is a great tribute tonight to talk about him, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Harry, you'd like to say a few words, you are muted.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, as Councillor Nolan mentioned, Paul, Paul was one who, obviously been way back, being the city manager, knew everything about the city, Magnolia. And growing up, obviously, all we knew was, was Magnolia. And, and he, he was one to keep us in line, whether, as Councillor Nolan mentioned, at the Magnolia Library, at the Magnolia Pier, on the beach. Paul was a wonderful man, his wife, Dottie, was, was as wonderful as, as Paul. And they were, they were just wonderful at their, at their home on the circle, on Hesperus. And as Councillor Nolan mentioned, we will, we will miss him terribly, thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, councilors, I'd like to take a moment of silence in respect to Paul Talbot. Thank you, councilors, and just a reminder that tomorrow, his funeral mask will be at Our Lady of Good Voyage at 10:00 a.m. So next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is oral communications.
Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard in oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Councillor Grow is going to do the timing tonight, because we don't have Councillor O'Hara on screen. Joanne, I don't know if you could help him get on his.
Okay, so what I have to do is remove him to allow to talk, and then bring him back in as a panelist. Okay, hold on a minute.
Okay, why don't we take a second to do that? Because I'd really like to be able to see everybody on the call, particularly where we're doing public hearings.
All right, so I promoted him to a panelist, so it's, he has to have his camera on.
Okay, Councillor O'Hara, can you put your camera on so we can see you? Okay, well, we can, we can hear him, and I don't think we can wait for this to occur. So, Councillor Grow, you are, you have offered to do the timing for public comments tonight? And right now, I see two people that have hands raised. Joanne, you can bring in either of the two, and whoever comes in first, it's Tom Robinson Cox. You have up to three minutes to talk to the councilors. And please introduce yourself and your address, thank you. Can you unmute yourself, Tom?
Unmute, okay.
Okay, now, yes, I'm in a dress.
All right, I'm Tom Robinson Cox, I live at Five Hascal Court in East Gloucester. I currently have a, I'm heading up a petition for a roadway betterment for paying on our private road. But I understand that there is a provision in the bylaws for emergency repair. And I'm requesting emergency repair of a very large pothole on our road while we're awaiting the matriculation of our petition. This pothole gets enlarged every time a snowplow goes over it. It's currently five feet wide and three feet across, and about six or eight inches deep. And it's getting worse every time a plow comes over it. About, it got enlarged by about twenty-five percent yesterday with the plows. So I respectfully request that we get emergency fill of the pothole while we're waiting for the, our petition for the betterment process. That's it.
Okay, well, I'll ask that your ward councillor gives you a call tomorrow, and they can work through the details with you. So, thank you, Tom, appreciate you being here. And next, we have Joel Favazza. Joel, would you introduce yourself and your name, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us.
Good evening, councilors, my name is Joel Favazza, I'm a resident at Twenty-Eight Middle Street, Gloucester. I am not appearing tonight on behalf of any clients. I am here simply to talk to the council about the dune grass at Pavilion Beach. For those of you that were involved in the hotel permitting, you'll recall there was lots of discussion about the characteristics of the beach, whether it was a barrier beach, et cetera. And I believe one of the conditions of the hotel permit was that the dune grass near the parking lot was to be left alone as much as possible, and the dune grass along the seawall was to be replanted. Bowport followed the requirements and replanted dune grasses as necessary and left the other grass alone. The grass has thrived over the last decade or so, but there are no protections in place like you would see at the other public beaches that have active dune grass in the city of Gloucester. I have reported this at oral communications to the Conservation Commission once or twice. I thought it would escalate it up to the city council, just to put that on the radar that there is active dune activity, dune grass, the same as you would find at Winger Sheik or Good Harbor, obviously on a smaller scale, but still ecologically important to the beach and to the local ecology of the neighborhood. And I've requested the city look into guarding the dune grass at this beach as it does with its others. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Joel. Anyone else like to speak to the council? I see Steve Aiello has his hand raised, Steve, a name and address, and you have three minutes to talk to us for matters not on the agenda.
Good evening, Steve Aiello, Twenty-Two Linden Road, Gloucester. A couple of things, last February, I called in, and I requested the administration to do a pay comparison of the mayor's position, city council positions, and the school committee positions with other city councils and mayors and school committees on the North Shore of cities of similar size in Massachusetts. And I'd like to know what the status is of that pay comparison. I believe, as I stated last winter, that our administration is woefully underpaid. And I know that most of you don't do the job for the money, you do it out of public service. I appreciate that, but you also shouldn't be taking a cut in pay because you have to give up time from your jobs or families or whatever else. So, again, I'd like to get an update on that request that I filed last February. Also, and on July 28th, I submitted through the council to the mayor's office a list of questions for the MBTA. I know I don't have to tell you why I submitted those questions. You asked that question to be submitted, I submitted questions. I have yet to receive answers to those questions that I submitted six months ago. Now, we gotta be honest with each other here. Keolis and the MBTA are lying to you. They lied to you and the administration about the trains idling on Woodward Avenue, and they're lying about the problems at the crossings in Gloucester. Last summer.
Steve, I'd like to correct you just for a second, I really don't want you to make personal attacks on people, so please speak to the issues and not make personal attacks, so continue.
There was no personal attack, I mean, I think it's, it's been widely publicized in the news that the legislature says that there's a rotten culture of safety at the MBTA and Keolis. So, let me, you know, refresh your memories, last summer, we had a bus involved in an incident at the Washington Street Crossing. Last week, we had an ambulance involved, a four-minute delay. Okay, do you want to hold your breath for the next four minutes? And tell me what effect that has on your, I know you're not going to finish the meeting if you hold your breath for four minutes. I'm frustrated, I know some of you are frustrated as well. Something needs to be done, we have a new governor, a new lieutenant governor. Hopefully, they'll be able to put somebody in charge, but we need to get their attention and get these matters resolved, whether they have to fire Keolis, whatever they have to do, I don't care. It is a safety issue, you people know as well as I do that people are concerned, they don't even want to use the crossings anymore. People don't feel safe in our city, so.
Steve, your three minutes is up, and we will, we will address your questions.
I'd like to get the quick, the answers to my questions, thank you.
Okay, all right, we have a meeting with them next Wednesday, so we will make sure that we, we bring that up. So thank you so much, Steve.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you for being here. Anybody else like to speak to the council for up to three minutes for matters not on the agenda? Councillor O'Neil, are you, do you see someone that wants to speak?
No, I have a question, you said we have a meeting with them next Wednesday, who has a meeting with whom?
It is the meeting that Senator Tar, Ania Margreferante, and Greg Verga, and I, and me, representing the council, has with Keolis and MBTA. Typically, it's every two to four weeks, depending on issues that have come up. You've received some of the minutes and the notes from it, from the mayor. And so we've, we've been keeping the, the city council in, up to speed with the conversations.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Councillor Grow, you have your hand raised, but we need to get to the next order of business, go ahead.
We have one more public comment.
Oh, okay, great, I see, I just see your hand, thank you for noticing. It is Mary Ann, Mary Ann, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us about matters not on the agenda.
Thank you, Val, Mary Ann Elbichouche, Ninety-three Montplaisan Avenue. I would just like to ask that the city council follow up with the report regarding the Good Harbor Beach Creek. And I know that there is to be additional inspection and information. And I'd like to know, and I'd like to have my questions answered, as to where this is stemming from. While it could be storage pipes that are leaking, where is the problem stemming from? I noticed yesterday on the Gloucester website that there was an alert sent out, which is fantastic that you alerted the people. But where is this all coming from and why? And for a hundred and twenty thousand dollar consultant and inspection, the constituents and the residents of this city deserve answers. We need transparency, and, and we'd like to have answers, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And I'll pause in case someone else, oh, I see Pam Steele would like to speak. Come on in, Pam, and join our meeting, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us for matters not on the agenda. And Councillor Grow is doing the timing. Go ahead.
He disappeared.
Oh, where did you go?
There she is.
Pam. I see, I've been seeing her hand, right here she is, Pam, would you unmute yourself, great.
I'm not sure that this is the appropriate venue, but I was just wondering if, when I went to a meeting at the Veterans School, and it was, all of you were in attendance, school committee, other city officials, and there was a traffic study as part of that meeting. And I was wondering if that could be resurrected for the Traffic Commission meeting that's coming up on Thursday? And we could maybe read it, because I did ask a lot of questions, and they've never been answered. It was the corporation that did the traffic study for the school committee.
Yeah, there was a, there was an automated version from the meeting, and there was also a document that was published. So we can, so if you'd like to make that request through the clerk's office, I'm sure she can accommodate that.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councillor Grow has his hand raised, so go ahead.
Have her, her name and address for the record.
Oh, yeah, Pam Steele, before you leave us, can you tell us your address?
Sorry.
So I think I'd know by now, Ten Pilots Hill, Gloucester.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you so much, Pam.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we're through with public comments. Taking one more look. Seeing none, next order of business, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, you're muted.
Next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
Thank you, and I will ask Councillor Nolan, the Chair of ONA, to, to lead us through the confirmations of new appointments. Councillor Nolan.
Thank you, President Gilman. So first up, we have the Board of Health, Thorson Acrely, which is Thor. He's all right with that, term to expire two fourteen twenty-six. Thor, how are you doing tonight? Does anybody see Thor on the?
I see, he just came, he just came on.
Yeah, I was just, I was just unmuted, thanks for inviting me in, and I'm doing well, thank you.
Excellent, so Thor, if you just tell the, the full council a little bit about yourself, and why you want to be on the Board of Health, that'd be excellent.
Sure, I grew up in Gloucester, I am thirty-two years old, recently had a baby girl. We've lived here, I guess I should say, I moved away for a little bit, but I came back, brought my, brought my wife here, and she's enjoyed it. I previously served in the, the Health Department as the city sanitarian, so I have a pretty broad background in Title V. The past five years, I've worked at a civil engineering firm doing environmental consulting, both related to Title V and onsite wastewater, but also with drainage, stormwater, and with wetlands and the Wetlands Protection Act. So I feel as though I'll bring a, a nice, I guess, additional skill set to the board, and it's something that I enjoy doing, and thought that I would be a valuable member to, to other members who may not have the same experience as I do.
Excellent, thank you, Thor. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Here are none, I'll read the committee report, and also thank you, Thor, for being here, you're very important. Your knowledge in Title V is going to be huge for the Board of Health. So on a motion by Councillor Majota, seconded by Councillor Nolan, the audience administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Thorson Acrely to the Board of Health, term to expire two fourteen twenty-six, and I saw move.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Nolan, seconded by Councillor O'Hara, is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councillor O'Neil?
Yes.
Councillor Worthy? Councillor Worthy, you are muted.
Yes, and thank you, Thor, sorry.
Councillor Gilman, yes, Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes, thank you, Thor, and your skill set is much needed on the, on the board, so that's great.
Councillor Nolan?
Absolutely, yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Welcome, Thor, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next order of business.
We have the Committee for the Arts, we have Christopher Griffith as an alternate member, term to end two fourteen twenty-six. Christopher, how are you doing tonight? Does anybody see Christopher?
He was on the Chris, yeah. Just, just, just for the record-keeping, I filed a twenty-three B three filing, conflict of interest, appearance of conflict of interest because of a professional relationship with the Gloucester Stage Company that I have via prescriptions, but it has no impact on my objectivity. So I just wanted to state that and move on.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I, I do not see Chris on the list.
He's here.
There he is.
Yeah.
Thank you, councilors, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Hope to bring some of my knowledge in the, in the arts world. I'm currently the managing director at Gloucester Stage Company, for those of you who don't know me. I've been at the stage company for five years now. That's also as long as I've lived in the beautiful city of Gloucester. Coming from Indiana, it's been a wonderful journey these last five years. It's been an absolute pleasure to get to know our community, to get to know the audience that's been coming to Gloucester Stage for forty years. And I think that this wonderful city has such great resources in the arts, and it's been a part of our story for, since its beginning. And so it's great to be able to join this committee and help that team really expand what the arts can do for our town, and make sure that arts are supported here locally.
Excellent, thank you, Christopher. Is there any questions or comments from the council? All right, here are none, I'd just like to say that I believe most of us have met Christopher and his work with the city. And the stage company is enthusiasm is unbelievable, and his character is perfect. And yes, I did ask him, and he did, he did respond, I thanked him for Larry Bird and the corn. He was happy with that. So with that being said, I'll read the motion, and it's on a motion by Councillor Majota, seconded by Councillor Nolan, the audience administration committee voted by roll call, two in favor, zero opposed, one, technical difficulty, to recommend the city council appoint Christopher Griffith. to recommend the city council appoint Christopher Griffith as an alternate member to the Committee for the Arts, term to expire two fourteen twenty-six, and I saw a move.
Second.
Um motion made by councillor Nolan and I think it was seconded by councillor O'Hara. Is there a discussion, councillors? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councillor Neil?
Yes.
Councillor Worthley?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Absolutely. We're lucky to have you.
Councillor Majota?
Absolutely.
Councillor Memard?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Councillor Nolan?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chris.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Um councillor Nolan, can you back up and do Elaine McIsaac, um the Archives Committee?
I can. Except that on my paperwork, it was opposite. So just give me one second. And councillor president, I don't have that in front of me, my paperwork. I don't have my other computer up. So if you could have uh councillor Majota or councillor O'Hara read that one, that'd be excellent.
Okay, um councillor O'Hara is the vice chair. Do you want to um speak on behalf of O N A?
Uh let me pull up the template if you could.
Okay. Councillor Majota, do you want to, do you want to do it or do you want me to do it? I I can do it. Um so um the go ahead.
Councillor O'Hara, you can? I'm just pulling it up right now, but go right ahead.
If you have. Okay, Jamie, did you find it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um well, why, why don't you go right ahead? Because I I actually I thought I had.
Okay. I can say.
Your showtime.
Committee recommendation on a, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Majota, seconded by councillor Nolan that the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, zero opposed, one O'Hara technically de- technical difficulties to recommend the city council appoint Eileen Mack.
Isaac.
Thank you. Thank you. To the Archives Committee, term ending two fourteen twenty-five, and I saw a move.
Second.
Motion's made by councillor Majota, was seconded by councillor O'Hara. Um does anybody have any questions? And should we also um allow Elaine McIsaac to speak if she would like? Councillor Nolan, I'll turn that part back to you, but we do have a motion on the floor. Go ahead.
Eileen, I'd love for you to speak again like you did the other night. I'm sorry the paperwork is in in front of us for this. Um the floor is yours.
Thank you. It is Elaine. No, not Elaine.
Right.
Um that's okay. I grew up in Gloucester, um grew up on Friend Street, um Portuguese Azorean heritage. I worked for the schools many years in superintendent's office, so I'm familiar with the city. And I just find it fascinating and the people that work there, that volunteer there are wonderful people. And every day is something new. Somebody asks about some property or something. We do the research on it, our our families. And I feel privileged to be asked to be on the committee.
Excellent. Thank you. And we're happy to have you. I'm sorry about the the mix up in the paperwork. But is there any other questions from the council?
Okay, seeing none. So we have a motion on the floor by councillor Majota, was seconded by councillor O'Hara. Um is there further discussion, councillors? Seeing none. Um we'll do a roll call vote. Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Neil?
Yes.
Councillor Worthley?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes, and thank you, Elaine.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes, thank you, Elaine.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Welcome, Elaine. Thank you.
Keep Stephanie in line.
Thank you.
And then councillor, the last is David Calvo. So I'll let you um get back to your, your appointments. Go ahead.
We have for the Committee for the Arts, we have David Calvo, term to end two fourteen twenty-six. Uh Dave, how are you doing tonight?
I'm good. Thank you.
Excellent. Do you want to tell you uh a little bit about yourself and why you want to be in the Committee for the Arts?
Sure. Um I moved to Gloucester in nineteen ninety on a, on a contract job in wood carving. Um I've been here since then and I've kind of had my shop over on East Main Street. Uh I do custom work, custom carving work as well as run a school. I've talked to, in all these years, I've talked to many and have a feel for what the artists um have to work through in terms of making a living in this area, which is not always the easiest. Um I've been a part of some of the associations that have been up here, some of the art associations, et cetera. Um up until this time, I haven't tried to get involved with too much in terms of publicly, in terms of a responsibility, because I was very much involved in um family court. I helped to try to um reorganize laws, et cetera, and loopholes. And I was uh placed on a, the Val Patrick when he was the governor's. He had a working uh working group on child-centered family law. I was involved, I was appointed to that. I've spoken at the State House. I've helped with legislation. Um and so I've been very publicly involved in that because I saw that there was a need for change. I see in Gloucester, there's uh certain things that are happening with the artistic community that needs a voice. I think I can give a voice to that, to kind of suggest some possible um uh resolutions to it, but there are certain things that I think that we need to address. I haven't seen anybody bring it before the city council at all. So I'm going to be that voice for that, hopefully. So that's, that's the intent.
Excellent. Thank you, David. Um before we read the motion, is there any questions or comments for David Calvo?
Tom, uh go ahead. You've got the call, councillor Nolan. Go ahead. You, you can call on people. I'm sorry.
It was just great talking to David in person on during O N A, um and to have that skill, you know, doing that your whole life. It's just simply amazing. And it's just great to have you to the Committee um for the Arts. So you got my support as you did in O N A. You have it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mojota. Is there any other councillors like to comment? Are here none?
Uh councillor Memard. Councillor Nolan, councillor Andres.
Excellent. I didn't see that. Councillor Memard?
Sure, I I just like to to add that I I know David, he's he's extremely passionate and uh involved in the community. He has a a lovely, active uh studio on East Main Street, which I've been in. Uh and he's, he's going to be a wonderful addition, I'm sure, to this committee. So thank you, David, for your service and looking forward to working more with you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, councillor Memard. Anybody else? Councillor Gilman?
Yeah, I'd like to just piggyback on councillor Memard's comments. I I know David, I know how um talented he is and how he energizes people that he um has in his classes and I'm looking forward to having him serve on this commission. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilman. Any other councillors like to comment? Seeing none. Um I'd like to say that I've known Dave for a while now and uh his expertise in woodworking and his desire to live in Gloucester and the culture is only going to add to the Committee for the Arts. He's a great person. As councillor Memard is to ice, David Calvo is to wool. So I I would definitely want to say thank you, Dave, and uh it's about time that you jumped on the public side.
He he leaves me in the sawdust.
Uh he does. And he's not just chipping away at it.
I do jump into knives during the winter. So that's some competition for us, Scott.
Absolutely. Dave is a cold water swimmer.
Oh, yes, he is. And a salsa dancer. Um so with that being said, I'd like to read the motion. And on a motion by councillor Majota, seconded by councillor O'Hara, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint David Calvo to the Committee for the Arts, term to end two fourteen twenty-six, and I saw a move.
Second.
Motion's made by councillor Nolan, seconded by councillor O'Hara. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Councillor O'Hara?
Yeah.
Councillor Neil?
Yes.
Councillor Worthley?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes, welcome.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes, thank you, David.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Welcome, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes all of our new appointments. So thank you, councillor Nolan. Um next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Councillors, would anyone like to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Councillor Gross? Councillor Gross, you are muted.
On the council orders, I'd like to pull off two, three, four, and five.
Okay. Um anyone else like to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay, so let's vote the consent agenda minus council orders number two, three, four, and five. Is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Second.
There's motions made by councillor Worthley and seconded by councillor O'Hara. Um roll call vote. Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Neil?
Yes.
Councillor Worthley?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman? Yes. Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Now we'll turn on the meeting back to uh councillor Gross. And um if you could um describe why you've removed uh two, three, four, and five.
The reason I pulled those off because it's um they're all private ways and the municipality cannot regulate parking restrictions on private ways. So it's not appropriate for us to act on this. It's private property. It's exactly the same as expending public funds on private property. Same rules apply. I've done a little bit of research on that. Um so I just want to make sure that's noted because I think it's been acted upon inappropriately by previous councils. So I just don't want to go down the same wrong, wrong road.
Um councillor Nolan?
Um I I've talked to Tony a little bit about this and there's been some other municipalities that have had different differences. Um if we go back to our ordinances about private roads and public access, we do have a right to it. Um if they don't want to use it as as a resident use um or resident use only, they may lose their right to plowing. It's not the pu- uh private property. There's a lot of discussion that's involved in this. And I think that this is something that we really would like to take up at O N A and uh dig deeper because if what councillor Gross is saying, then that means that other resident onlys on private roads, such as most of East Gloucester, uh Beach Road, Nautilus, and you know, other roads like that would lose the same benefit. So this may be a larger impact to the city, but I think that we should make this to go forward to O N A and have a a discussion and go through the whole situation. I I I don't believe that the resident only on a private road is the end-all or to not say we can't do it because it's private property. The the city maintains even the smallest part with with plowing, there is a public uh right away to that. And if the residents are looking for that, I think then that's what we would look to. If the residents don't want to do this, then we look away. But we have existing um situations that have proven that people want in certain situations. And I look forward to having this in front of O N A. I think it's going to be a a lively situation. Thank you.
Councillor Grow?
Two questions I would ask. Um one, has there been any ward meetings uh with the neighborhood about this uh potential change? I think Tony brings up the uh the law of unintended consequences. Um and I'm curious if the neighborhood is 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 barking for this or if or if this is not something that has yet been brought to them as 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 a as an issue. Um I would suggest regardless of what we do that uh we uh have Suzanne Egan uh do some digging into what this means in terms of uh the impact on neighborhood and and its and its use as a public way, private way, publicly accessed, the private way, whatever. But we should have um, we should have our legal department, excuse me. Sorry. Call from, call from college. Um we should have our legal department weigh in on this at the time so that we 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 save time on that issue.
Um I can address the um the ward issue. We had a meeting back in October of two thousand and twenty-one. The the meeting was at Corliss Landing. It was landing. It was attended by about sixty-five people. And ninety percent of the comments there were about betterments and about rules on Corliss Land, specific rules about laws and the landing and um and you know, certainly I can share the um the meeting notes from that, but nothing specific to residence-only parking. Um so um I did a walk-through in the fall with a couple of the neighbors and um and we walked around and there was not an interest at that point in residence-only parking, but um councillor Worthley certainly has a right to put these uh orders in if he wishes to. And um I think it's not a bad idea for us to pause as they're in the system to look into some of the technicalities. Um because a lot of the other issues with private roads and residence-only parking has been very related to safety and then in that particular neighborhood. Um and and as well as the uh the width of streets, the amount of um havoc, the amount of of just overwhelming residential neighborhoods. So that's been, that's been a part of this. And um but I think it's, it's not a bad thing if we just kind of take this slowly and look at it. So um I think that this is a good conversation and we can um we can take the rest up with um with assistance from Suzanne Egan, who's certainly very up to speed on private roads. And uh Tony and I have had a strong education in the last couple of days at the MMA ma- meeting, having sat through Mike Hale's um presentation, which was excellent on Friday. So um having said that, I think we'd um oh councillor Grow, uh councillor O'Hara, and then councillor Grow, I'll let you speak one more time unless somebody else likes to speak before him that has not.
Jeff has.
Okay, um so councillor O'Hara, your your hand is up first, I believe, and then councillor Worthley.
Thank you. I I want to mimic uh councillor Nolan as as um being on the O N A, I'm I'm looking forward to uh reviewing these these issues. Uh I have spoken to councillor, uh excuse me, attorney Egan concerning other private road issues uh recently dealing with dogs over on Rust Island. And I I think this is a a great um potential for for over on Rust Island. And I I think this is a a great, um, potential for for us to dig in um, as the O N A, uh, doesn't mind the heavy lifting of of evaluating and reviewing these issues. Um, because it certainly not only impacts the direct, uh, roads that are noted, but clearly throughout the city. So, uh, again, I'm I'm very much looking forward to having this move, uh, to O N A. Thank you.
Um, so Council Worthley.
Thank you. Um, good questions. And with great respect, I'd like to respond to a couple of them. Um, I too, at that ward meeting, as you know, Counselor Gilman, and I heard conversations specifically about this. I grew up in Ward Four. For twenty three years, I lived in Ward Four, and I have family that live in the area, and I've had this question raised many, many a times. And I've had specific requests from people who live in the area. I campaigned in Ward Four mostly exclusively just because of timing. And I've heard this question raised many, many a time. Um, I think to the ward councillors, and correct me if I'm wrong, would say that I have a good working relationship with each of you to be supportive of the things that you want to move forward. And if things come to my attention, I I do my very best to alert the ward councillors. So there's no, um, stepping on toes or no intention to step on toes. I certainly, so I think this would be helpful to have the conversation. Now, we all know that none of us are attorneys, or at least not municipal attorneys, as far as I know. And I had a conversation with Suzanne Egan, our legal attorney this evening, or probably around four thirty, she called me. And she said that she she committed to having an answer back to us within a month. Um, and given that this needs to go from here to O N A, to the Traffic Commission, back to O N A, back to the council, scheduled for public hearing. I think the fastest this could ever take place would be about six weeks. And so if she's committing an answer within a month, then we'll have that in time for our public hearing. And also, if there's a concern that is valid with the neighbors that have told me about the the boating issues creating residual impact to their, um, neighborhood, then I think it's incumbent for us not to miss the start of the boating season. So if we were to pause now and wait a month to start, that puts us in the end of February. And then March, April, we are under the gun if this is the solution. I want to go through the process. Let an O N A, O N A do the digging that they do, let the Traffic Commission come back to us with recommendations. And if it turns out, I think Council Memard had a a situation in Niles Beach recently where after hearing the discussion, I'm okay. If the discussion leads to this isn't the right thing to do, so it's a legal thing to do. I'm not going to fight it. I think that the the opportunity to have the conversation is valid. And I wouldn't like to, I don't want to waste any more time. So I respect the reasons that you raised, Counselor Gross, Counselor Grow. I would like your support and at least sending us to O N A. It looks like the O N A committee members are eager to at least have the dialogue. So let's hope for, um, a healthy dialogue and a productive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Neill. Your hand is raised. And then Council Gross, um, for the second time, if no one else wants to speak that hasn't spoken. Council O'Neill.
Thank you. Um, I would like to see this go to O N A. I've had some people, not that I have any private roads, but, um, I've had some people requesting that this street be made resident parking only. So, um, I just haven't, um, been as quick to pull the trigger on it. Um, just kind of waiting. And anyway, I would like to see this go to O N A so that I could observe the process and see what what is said. Yeah, thank you.
Um, and someone else had their hand raised. Um, Council Gross, I think you had your hand raised and Council Grow.
I just, um, on the City of Boston's website, um, this is just one of the places I went. And unfortunately, most of my, um, research is on the computer that I'm on Zoom on. But quickly I pulled this up and it's it says, um, for private roads, um, parking, property, there's a city of Boston. Property owners are responsible for setting and enforcing any parking regulations within a private way. I just want you to all be aware that I didn't pull, I I did the do the due diligence to find this out. So I hope you all also do the due diligence because there's a lot of information out there that just supports the fact that it's private property.
Fair.
Um, Council Grow, and then we should, um, move on. Go ahead, Council Grow.
I just want to say that I I don't have an objection with O N A, uh, looking into it. Um, I think once we get the response from Suzanne Egan about the legality and the consequences of that, that this potentially may open up all the other residential parking, uh, on private ways, uh, areas that have been done in the last few years. So, uh, it's one of these be careful what you ask for kinds of things. Council O'Neill, you know, the 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 thing is going to be a little bit different on public roads. So if you're interested in putting pulling the trigger, I don't think you have to wait until this is resolved because we have authority over public ways regardless. So, uh, don't, don't, don't worry about that. Anyway, that's it.
Um, so I just like to just remind people, and I think that this is helpful, but there are two things that I'd ask. I don't want to run ahead and start posting these as, um, for for public hearing because these four positions, uh, would orders would probably cost this taxpayers in Gloucester about fifteen hundred dollars for these four orders. And I think we have to be, um, fiscally responsible. So I think the first step is to review some of the legal issues before we hurry up to get these posted as, um, in the Gloucester Daily Times for for, um, for public hearing, because I think we we should be fiscally responsible on these matters. And I do want to mention that the quarries, which is one area that we did include all these no parking issues, is a great deal of safety matters up there. And it's made a remarkable improvement in the quality of life and the amount of safety issues because residents only in a very tight neighborhood with very small streets with lots of people that would go in four hundred at a time at the quarries, um, the quality of life is a hundred percent better and safer for those residents. So I just wanted to plug that, but I think it's a good thing for us to look into this because we want to do what's right. So, um, at this point, um, I would, um, I would like to, um, and I can also have a ward meeting as well if that helps, but I don't want to run ahead um, until we figure this out. Council Nolan, and then we'll, um, we'll we'll get back to these four, um, orders. Council Nolan.
I, um, I'm pretty conservative about the way we spend money. Um, we do have some orders in front of us to look into. And I think that this is important to go ahead and post and to put on the agenda and send it to Traffic and O N A and Legal. Um, if we just let everything that can be for us to go in front of legal before we had a bite at it, then we may be discouraged to actually ask to do something that we're being asked to do. So I would be opposed to not putting this forward due to the fact of of notifications and expenses to the city for public hearing. We do do public hearings and public media notices that do backfire. Um, I think this is one that is going to be important, not just for what's in front of us or who may be behind us as well. And the best course of action is to actually have the council work on this and not just take a look at it and ask one's legal opinion that may not be right for the city. I think this is something that we should take on at O N A um, in 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 bring it forward and work on it, like any other controversial thing that comes before budget and finance or planning. It's not just looking to see if someone could build something or how we can pay for it, but is this legal and what can we do? And are people actually asking for it? But now we have the motion of looking to see of what we've done in the past, um, from Council Gross, if this is the right thing to do. But I think it's important for us to move forward, um, with or without an opinion from from legal counsel tonight. I think this is something we need to work on. So I I'd strongly ask each councillor to let O N A work on this and find out what's going on because I think that what's said before, be careful what you're asking for, there may be consequences. But let's get it right. We need to get it right with the public opinion and their elected officials as well, not just the legal opinion from our city attorney.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Um, Council Grow, and then we'll, um, move the question.
I have a question about just for Sean.
Go ahead.
Sean, you're just referring to tonight's referral. You're not, you're 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 not saying let's not get a legal opinion on this, is that? Right?
All right. No, Council Gross, no, I'm definitely not saying let's not get.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I I'm just saying that I I think that this is worthwhile to have a discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
I I definitely think that we should bring this in front of O N A and and have a discussion on it because I think it is a a a big part of what happens in the city. Um, I I I believe in you. I believe in your information. I just think that we need to make this a bigger a bigger conversation than just, uh, on a consent agenda.
Right.
Okay, so, um, we're back to council orders number two, three, four, and five. Um, I'll just read one of them, um, which is, um, Worthley amend G C O, chapter twenty two, traffic and motor vehicles, section twenty two dash two seventy one, residence sticker parking only by adding Apple Street, both sides from the end of Brownsfield Playground to Corliss Landing. And then the other ones deal with Juniper, both sides from Honeysuckle across Apple and two where it intersects with Corliss Landing. The third is Blueberry Lane for its entire length. And the fourth is Honeysuckle Road, both sides from number sixteen to its intersection with Juniper Road. Um, so, um, is there a motion to, um, approve those four to be referred to O N A and P C?
Second.
I think I think there was a motion I heard by Council Gross, perhaps. Was it you, Council Gross? Okay, good. And Council O'Hara was the second. Um, so is there a discussion, Councillors? Seeing none, a roll call vote for the referral of Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk. Great. So, um, I would just like to direct the attention to Councillors on the unanimous consent calendar, which is for information only. And, um, Joanne, if you wouldn't mind screenshotting this, it's just a letter from me uh, to increase chapter ninety fiscal twenty four state funding as well as the M M A wrote of fiscal twenty four, the budget resolution, which was, um, conducted on Saturday at the M M A business meeting. I don't know if you can, um, can you screenshot? It's on your screen. Do you want to hit the, um?
Okay, hold on a minute.
Shot. It's listed, Joanne. While you try to get that, why don't I describe what it is in case we can't get that screenshot? So Councillors, in your packet, and for members of the public that want to see the unanimous consent calendar, you can go on the city website, onto city councillors, uh, council website, and to, um, our minutes and our packets. And on the packets for tonight, you'll also see this unanimous consent agenda calendar. It's for information only. There are two documents related to the critical line item on chapter ninety fiscal twenty four state funding budget. The first thing in the packet that I'd like to focus your attention on is a four-page proposed resolution supporting an enduring fiscal partnership between cities and towns in fiscal twenty four and beyond. And, um, just to, um, to note on this four-page resolution, it was voted by all three hundred and fifty one municipalities at the meeting on Saturday. And the line item that I'd like to focus your attention on and the members of the public, because this is really important, is the governor and the legislator should work together early in twenty twenty three to secure enactment of a multi-year transportation bond bill that provides at least three hundred million annually for chapter ninety local road projected index to grow to match construction inflation with a notice of allocations for fiscal twenty twenty four by March first, two thousand and twenty three, with authorization for the complete streets and small municipal budget programs provided as additional and separate allocations. And why is this important to us? Because as Mike Hale has been very clear to us, Councillors, for the last four or five years since we've been dealing on this issue, um, this line item has been fixed at two hundred million since fiscal two thousand and twelve. And this has a huge consequence to us and all three hundred and fifty one municipalities. And we heard loud and clear um, in in Mike Hale's presentation on Friday that this is a problem throughout all municipalities in Massachusetts. And this particular part of the resolution, they're asking for at least three hundred million annually. And at the meeting on Saturday, um, I had been given approval by, um, the mayor and, um, it was agreed to by Mike Hale that I attempted to amend this part of the resolution to make it at least four hundred million annually. And that's exactly what Mike has identified as being necessary. You know how many times he's told us in all his meetings that we only have enough money in our chapter ninety budget of six hundred and eighty thousand to repave our roads every forty years and our public roads need to be paved every twenty years. And that's a huge issue. And it's further complicated. Um, because we have, um, we have the challenge that, um, in order for us to routinely accept qualified private ways to become public roads per our Code of Ordinance, chapter twenty one, article two, section twenty one one, um, this inadequate funding becomes, um, much more complex. And in fiscal twenty four, um, Joanne, if you want to just not put your screenshot up because I don't think we're getting the, um, the screenshot. So thank you. But, um, Mike reported by Kale that, um, for his annual chapter ninety M M A survey in December two thousand and twenty one, that one million in additional funding was needed for fiscal twenty four and that a total of one point six five million would allow the city of Gloucester a strong annual paving schedule that would address all public roads in Gloucester on a twenty-year paving schedule. So the, um, the last paragraph of my letter, which Councillors, I know you've all read, is something that I'm hoping that without objection, I have your commitment and agreement. But, um, after this robust chapter ninety conversation at the M M A meeting, we have renewed momentum. And this is the time right now to go to town and start lobbying for this. So without objection, I will request a meeting with Mayor Berger and his administration, Senator Tar, Representative Amara Ferrante, to ask for the legislative support to advocate that our fiscal twenty four state budget receives sufficient chapter ninety funding in the range of at least three hundred and thirty million, as cited by Jeff Beckwith, who is the M M A Executive Director and C E O, and ideally four hundred million, which our city administration and Public Works Director believes is adequate for fiscal two thousand and twenty four. There I will ask our local legislators for suggestions on best ways to escalate our city's chapter ninety needs directly to Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll in the immediate future. So time is of the essence, Councillors, and I, um, hope without objections, you'll support me moving forward to lobby hard for us. I can do a resolution. You can all sign it as long as there are no objections that you all agree that we'd like to lobby for this line item to be at least four hundred million dollars. And that's for the whole state. It's a huge problem. And we have to start being aggressive about it. So without objection, seeing none, thank you. And I'll let you know when a resolution is done on this. And, um, and you can go down to City Hall and fill it out. And we have, um, consensus here. So I appreciate it. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of January nineteen.
Okay, I'd like to ask Council Memard, who bears B and F, to, um, to present your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, uh, similar to last meeting, we're going to present, um, the Budget and Finance Committee. the Budget and Finance Committee items as a consent agenda, which I will step through and highlight each one of them individually. And if anybody wants to pull anything off for further discussion, they can do so. We're doing this simply in the interest of time and the C P A presentations and approvals that are being sought for later in our meeting tonight. So that there are seven items. The first is a memorandum for the Police Financial Coordinator in twenty twenty-three S B T ten, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and four dollars and sixty-two cents for the purpose of transferring budgetary salary in twenty twenty-three of a Gloucester police officer has been transferred from the Uniform Division to the Investigations Division. The second item from our police chief, Ed Connolly, requested acceptance of a fiscal year twenty twenty-three Community Impact Unit earmark in the amount of twenty thousand dollars with no local match required. This is for the Community Impact Unit of Gloucester Police Department. The third item is memorandum from our fire chief, Eric Smith, requesting acceptance of a fiscal year twenty twenty-three Massachusetts D F S firefighter safety equipment grant in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, primarily for the purpose of purchasing replacement hoses, nozzles, and valves with no local match. The fourth item is a memorandum from the Director of Elder Services requesting acceptance of a fiscal year twenty twenty-three Title Three B older American providers services grant contract in the amount of nine thousand, four, eight hundred and forty-one dollars through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for an outreach coordinator at the Rose Baker Senior Center. And there is a ten percent local grant match. The fifth item is a memorandum from Elise Sinagra, our Director of Elder Services, requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars from the following parties within our community, individuals and businesses. The Brace Cove Foundation, Nicholas Mosseri, Richard Semple, Ray Simpson, Vincy Woodhams, Madonna Del Rosario Society, David Bonny Kaplan, Jerry Favolaro, Marilyn Grant, William and Sharon Furman, and Annette Hale, and Angela Miller. Again, that's in the total of six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. And then on number seven, similarly, from a Director of Elder Services requesting acceptance of donations totaling eight hundred and fifteen dollars, including donations from the Gloucester Police Relief Association, Jerry Favolaro again, Marilyn Grant, Elizabeth Hilsy, Carol Burke, the First R Foundation, Phyllis Riordan, and the Gonzalo and Gonzalo Ellen Vergoe, totaling eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And then the final item, the number seven, is a memorandum for our Chief Financial Officer, John Dunn, S B T, excuse me, twenty twenty-three S A dash eight dash nine dash ten dash eleven dash twelve and dash thirteen regarding our allocation of the July first, twenty twenty-three general fund free cash, following the formula that has been set by prior administrations with a change, as has been noted, of taking out five percent from two of the funds for a ten percent contribution towards our public road repair and paving fund. And those are the two, those are the all that's before us. And if anybody has anything they could pull off, please let us know. Otherwise, I would move for acceptance of the seven items described.
Councilors, would anyone like to remove any of these matters for further discussion and disvote the ones that you're comfortable with? Counsel O'Neill, your hand was raised.
If, can I just ask a quick question?
Can we, can we move, can we move it, and then and then we can talk about the questions? So so is there, is there, is there one that anyone wants to remove? Seeing none, is there a motion to to accept the matters on this unanimous consent agenda as noted?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Worthy, is there a second? So Gilman, so Worthy moved it, Gil seconded it. Is there a discussion? And this is your opportunity, Counsel O'Neill, to ask questions or discuss. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. On number seven, is, do you have a total amount of all these transfers of money? Is there a total?
Um.
The total is our authorized free cash. I believe it's four million and change. I don't have the specific number. It's the total of, yeah. Kenny can, Kenny can add to that, but I don't have it written down in front of me. I believe it's a little bit over four million dollars.
Thank you for being here, Ken Crosser. Can you tell us what the total is and answer Counsel O'Neill's question? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you through the council, through the chair. The total general fund free cash was four million, three hundred and four thousand and six hundred and eight dollars. That was certified recently.
Thank you. Thank you. Follow-up question, Counsel O'Neill?
Yes, the last two items are the same exact amount, is that correct?
It's just a percentage, ten percent.
I'm sorry?
Ten percent.
It's just a percentage, Counsel O'Neill, it's it's based on a percentage formula. It's ten percent of the total amount allocated to those two categories.
Okay, thank you.
In both cases, ten percent and ten percent.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, councilors, or questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote? Is everyone clear on what the roll call is? It's to accept the unanimous consent agenda of the B and F report. Okay, so Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Ordinance Administration Standing Committee Report of January seventeen, the special meeting?
Counsel Nolan? Counsel, you are muted.
We have no items for discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
For the Planning Development Standing Committee Report of January eighteen.
Counsel Grow?
We have a couple of items. We have one item that we need to vote on and a couple of housekeeping. The first one is a city council needs to vote to accept a, what's specifically called?
Memorandum from the.
Conservation restriction, no, yeah, it's we have, we have to accept the amendment to a conservation restriction for a piece of property that has been donated to the trustees of reservations out on Bray Street, seventy-five Bray Street. It's fourteen points, three-six acres that is being.
It's actually Essex County Green Belt.
Okay, Essex County Green, but you're right. I'm sorry, I apologize for that. I thought the trustees was taking, just taking it on. Anyway, it is a permanent restriction, conservation restriction on fourteen point three-six acres. And that will go on until our great, great, great grandkids are old. So with that, we can have a motion on by Counsel Grow, seconded by Counsel Gilman. The Planning Development Subcommittee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve the foregoing amendment to conservation restriction made by and between the Essex County Green Belt Association Incorporated and the trustees of reservations in the public interest pursuant to section thirty-two, chapter one eighty-four of the Massachusetts General Laws, and I so move.
Second. Motion's made by Counsel Grow and seconded by Counsel Gilman. I, Counsel O'Neill, I'm sorry, it was you, Tracy. I would just like to see if anybody has any questions, still a little bit out of order. But Chris LaPointe is on the call, if I'm not mistaken, in case anyone has a question on the conservation part of this. I believe I saw his name. Let me just check my screen. Okay. So if anyone has any technical questions, we have the person that oversees Essex County Green Belt Association, the trustees of reservations, if there are any questions before we vote this. Okay, Chris, thank you for being on the call. Seeing none. So is the motion seconded by Counsel O'Neill? Further discussion or any discussion, councilors?
We'll just point out, Counsel O'Neill asked the question, I think that that we all had, is why are we involved in this? And there's just a a lot of, a lot of sign-offs that have to go in place. The mayor's office, the city council, city council is required to be involved for this approval. But beyond that, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a record-keeping vote at this point.
Thank you. Counsel Nolan?
I just want to thank Chris in the Essex County Green Belt for all the work they do in preserving some of the areas that we really need to protect.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes, sorry.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Chris LaPointe and your team. We appreciate it. And I'm going to turn the meeting back to Counsel Grow, because he has a housekeeping matter or two, he said.
The first we have is a, we have a site visit scheduled for January thirty-first at three P M. at one oh eight Main Street. This is to have a looksee at the proposed redevelopment of a building from a partial residential building, but mostly opens, unused building into a boutique hotel that will house twelve units. That is the building that also houses Passport's restaurant. So if you're interested in in seeing what's happening there, that is on January thirty-first, three P M. at one oh eight Main Street. It is a site visit. We will be taking questions, but not deliberating at that time. And then, secondly, we had a very extensive presentation by Greg Catimatori on the proposed floodplain zoning amendment overlay district. We asked that people who are are interested in this issue, councilors especially too, if you have questions, if you haven't seen the presentation, I would advise you take a look at it. Assemble any questions that you might have by, hopefully, the next couple of days, so that we can get them to Greg in time for him to answer before we retake this up on the eighth, I want to say, take a look at the calendar real quick. But at our next P and D meeting. So that would be on the.
February eighth.
Eighth, yeah, February eighth. So a- any questions, if you could have them in by next Thursday, that'd be terrific, and that'll give Greg some time to answer them. If you have any questions that need to be addressed, that was, that would be the the most expeditious way of doing it. Also, for the public, please send them to me. My email address, jaygrow@lostor-ma.gov. I will endeavor to get them to Greg for answering. Thank you. That's it for us.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
I just want to mention on the proposed Conservation Restriction Amendment that the council is required to sign that document. It'll be in the city clerk's office, so if you can stop by at your convenience to sign that, it would be appreciated. So the next order of business is public hearing twenty twenty-two dash three four loan order, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine loan authorization, the amount of ninety million dollars for the Gloucester Police Station and Courthouse Facility reservation, renovation, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Counsel, Madam Clerk. Councilors, could you mute yourselves if you're not speaking? Because there's a lot of whistling right now, and it's hard to hear. So I'd like to open the public hearing for the loan authorization in the amount of nineteen million dollars for the Gloucester Police Station Courthouse Facility renovation and continue it to February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two amendment to loan order two thousand and nineteen dash zero zero five loan authorization in the amount of three million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the redesign and retrofit of the Gloucester High School flood barrier.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. And just, just an administrative issue, I'd like to make sure that everyone is on camera during the public hearing, so that we know that everyone is listening to the entire public hearing in terms of the city councilors. So Counsel Worthy, could you, could you make sure that you're here so you can be part of this public hearing process, because we want all of us to be able to vote? Counsel Worthy?
Sorry, I had a little technical difficulty. I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'd like to open the public hearing for the amendment to loan order, loan authorization, the amount of three million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the redesign and retrofit of the Gloucester High School flood barrier. And I believe either Jill Cahill or John Dunn is going to speak on behalf of this to begin the conversation. So our CFO, John Dunn, it looks like you're on screen, so would you like to have the floor?
Yeah, well, thank you very, thank you very much, Counselor. And yes, I guess I'm going to carry this for a little bit.
Okay.
Unfortunately, as we found out through the past year, that project designs and estimates that were many years in the past, I shouldn't say many, two or three years in the past, have been affected by supply chain issues, labor issues, and that type of thing. So in this case, we have the same issue with the Gloucester High School flood barrier, where when we received the final input from basically people who were bidding on the project, came in a bit higher than we expected. So again, this was estimated back in twenty nineteen. It was designed, and when we put out the project for bids a number of months ago, we found out that there was not enough appropriation in order to be able to award the bid. So that's, we're in a position where unfortunately, we have to come up with another four hundred thousand dollars to do that. The good news, to a certain extent, is that we still have support from the state in basically a grant of two point four million dollars. So as much as it hurts to have to appropriate more money to get this done, is a valuable project that we do need to get done, and we do have a support from the state of about two-thirds of the project. So I would ask that the council move this forward tonight, so we can award the contract and begin to move forward on doing the project and getting it finished.
Thank you, John. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this loan authorization? Jill Cahill?
Hi, sorry, I'm having difficulties, technical difficulties. I just wanted to mention, and I brought this up in at B and F, this project was identified when we did our M V P
You are having technical difficulties, because you sound like you.
Anyway, please.
Jill, can I, can I just carry on for you for a second, and then you can give a thumbs up? Because we, Jill and I talked this afternoon about this. So when we did our M V P program, it must have been five years ago. We, we did, we broke up, there were sixty-five people there. She's got her thumbs up. And what we did was we broke up into groups and talked about what the most important things were for us in terms of our municipal vulnerability plan. And this particular matter was at the top of almost everybody's. at the top of almost everybody's list when we got into the small groups to discuss it. And this is a continuation of that process, which I totally appreciate. So Jill, did it, if you can be heard, did I say everything correctly? Okay, I'm not supposed to be speaking in this part of the public, um, hearing, so I'm sorry for, um, intervening, but I thought I could help, so. Okay, um, anyone else like to speak in favor of? Seeing none, anyone, um, interested in speaking in opposition to this loan order? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences or communications?
There are none.
Councillors, do you have any questions? Seeing none. Up councillor O'Hara, I'm sorry councillor O'Neil, you have the floor.
Um. Just to, just to confirm that this is the total authorization is three million five fifty, three million five hundred fifty thousand, correct? So there's just it just an additional four hundred thousand added. Okay, thank you. Just making sure I get it right.
Okay, any further questions, councillors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from the B and F Chair, Scott Memmer.
Thank you. I would just comment that, uh, in the, in the good old days, M V P used to stand for our most valuable player. And that unfortunately is no longer the case. So, um, this is an amendment to loan order twenty nineteen dash zero zero five, which was a loan authorization, as as councillor O'Neil just commented, uh, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five, three, three million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the re the redesign and retrofit of the Gloucester High School flood barrier. And the budget and finance recommended at our, uh, January nineteenth meeting on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, voting three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council approve the loan order amendment as follows. Ordered that the loan order twenty nineteen zero zero five certificate vote twenty nineteen zero eighty-seven of this council approved June eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing the borrowing of three million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay costs of improvements for the redesign and retrofit of the Gloucester High School flood barrier, including costs incidental or related thereto, is amended in its entirety to provide as follows, that the city of Gloucester appropriates three million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, again, that's four hundred thousand dollars additional to pay for the cost of improvements for the redesign and retrofit of the Gloucester High School flood barrier, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayors authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to national law, chapter forty-four, section seven, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. And the mayor or any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for it, accept and expend any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of the projects and any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount and further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify it or chapter forty-four A of the general laws. Any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and to execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes. And I sub move.
Second.
Motion's made by councillor Memmer, seconded by councillor Worley. Is there a discussion, councillors? Councillor O'Neil.
Thank you, I'm just wondering who's doing the work? Do we know?
Um, John Dunn or Kenny or Jill, or any of you, um, have that information?
Hold on, yes, so, bids, bids have been received and the winning bid was a particular, uh, company, Methuen Contractors, and I believe, um, I don't have that in front of me, but, um, they were the low bidder on the project.
Okay, and they're a Methuen contractor?
Pardon me?
They're, they're a contractor out of Methuen?
Uh, well, no, I don't know where they're coming from, councillor. Um, it could be, you know, just like, you know, Springfield contractors who may be located in Salem.
Okay, so, all right, so you don't know who's doing the work? Is that right?
Uh, I, I, no, I, I, I do not specifically tonight. Um, but bids have been received at the purchasing office, bids have been reviewed by uh, D P W, and this is a low bidder with a qualified bid, which by law we have to award.
Okay, is there, how can I find out who won that bid?
It's called Methuen Contracting Corporation.
Ah, okay.
What John said.
Well, he said the Methuen contractors, and then I said.
The name of the firm.
Methuen Contracting Company.
Inc, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, um, at this part of the hearing, um, we have, um, we have a motion, we have a second, and we are having a discussion. Um, I did see just as a point of, um, possibly to suspend our rules, I saw Gary Thobers hand up after the, um, public hearing. Gary, if you are still there and you want to speak on this, I can ask the councillors to suspend our rules or procedures to hear you if you missed the public hearing and you wanted to speak, and I don't see your hand up anymore. So, um, so let's continue back to, um, the, um, the motion on the floor. Anyone else like to speak, um, on this, councillors, in the discussion? Seeing none. Um, roll call vote, councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councillor O'Neil.
Yes.
Councillor Worley.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman, yes, councillor Gross.
Yes.
Councillor Grow.
Yes.
Councillor Majota.
Yes.
Councillor Memmer.
Yes.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes, to an M V P.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, is there any reason to do a reconsideration on this, um, CFO, uh, Dunn?
Yes, that would be, that would be very good to do, so we can kind of move forward, this has been kind of out there for a little bit, so.
Okay, councillors, anyone like to reconsider?
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Um, move, move to reconsider is made by, um, councillor Memmer, sectioned by councillor Worley. Um, councillor O'Hara.
No.
Councillor O'Neil.
No.
Councillor Worley.
No.
Councillor Gilman, no, councillor Gross.
No.
Councillor Grow.
No.
Councillor Majota.
No.
Councillor Memmer.
No.
Councillor Nolan.
No.
Motion fails, zero in favor, nine opposed. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three, recommendations from the Community Preservation Committee, round twelve, fiscal year twenty-two.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Matt Lumberg, who is our, um, the chair of our C P C to, uh, have the floor. Matt's got his hand raised, so let's bring him in and and you have the floor to begin the public hearing, Matt, thank you. Joanne, do you want to co, allow me to co-host, I can bring him in?
I already, you are the co-host, but I just brought him in.
Okay, great. All right, Matt, um, how are you? And, um, and then we'll look forward to your screen share and you to do this presentation. So tell us about what's in front of us right now.
Will do. Good evening, councillors, and good evening, Joanne. It's nice to see everybody. Um, I do have a slide presentation, and I believe all of our recipients have a representative on hand to speak to their projects and answer any questions that, uh, you councillors may have. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and try to share my screen, uh.
Okay, can I just, um, Matt, can you, I just need to interrupt you for a sec, um, councillor O'Neil, are you, can you be on camera so we know that you're here and you can participate in the public hearing? She's back, okay, awesome, thank you. Um, okay, so continue, Matt, I appreciate it.
Very good. Um, uh, I'll start with a short preamble, um, because I realize that, um, sometimes we just launch into the projects, but I think it would be helpful, uh, to, uh, just give a brief overview of the C P A. Uh, the Community Preservation Act is a Massachusetts law that was enacted in two thousand that allows, uh, participating cities and towns to adopt a real estate tax surcharge of up to three percent in order to create a local community preservation fund that can only be used for one of four community preservation purposes. And those are open space protection, historic preservation, community housing and outdoor recreation. Today, a hundred and ninety-four cities and towns have adopted the C P A in Massachusetts. Uh, we in Gloucester adopted it in two thousand and eight with a one percent tax church surcharge, uh, that was approved through a citywide ballot vote. Um, on a house assessed at five hundred thousand dollars, this adds forty-two dollars to that taxpayers' bill. Since then, Gloucester has granted over eight million dollars to more than a hundred and twenty projects, uh, under the C P A. Um, when a, a city or town adopts the C P A, the law requires that we establish a community preservation committee to oversee the fund and to make recommendations to the mayor and the city council on which projects to fund. Uh, the C P C in Gloucester is made up of nine members, uh, including one member each from the planning board, the Open Space and Recreation Committee, the Conservation Commission, the Housing Authority and the Historical Commission. Uh, the other four members are at-large members and we each serve, um, a maximum of two, three-year terms. So that's the brief overview of this C P A, and now I'm gonna try to share my screen to talk more about this year's projects. Let's see. All right, hopefully you're seeing this.
We are.
And oops, just a minute.
Now we're not.
Yep.
Now we are.
There we go. Okie doke. Um, so this year, um, we had an interesting year for the Community Preservation Committee in that, uh, we had, uh, a much larger number of applications that we had before, and I think that was due to a couple of reasons. One, I think a lot more people are, are learning about this C P A because we're working hard to make sure that people know about it. And the other one is that Gloucester's four hundredth anniversary is coming up, and I think that motivated a lot of people with historic preservation, uh, projects, uh, in mind to apply this year. Um, we had, um, twenty-two applications this year, um, the applied value for which was over two and a half million dollars. Um, the recommendations that we'll be making to you tonight are for fourteen projects um, at a total funded amount of one point one oh four million dollars. Uh, from a budget standpoint, uh, C P C money, C P A money is held by the city in several accounts, um. Uh, we are required to, uh, uh, manage separate accounts for each, uh, um, uh, funding category, uh, and then, uh, there's also a general reserve. Um, at, uh, before we made these recommendations, the current balances show what's in those accounts now, but working from left to right. Uh, the amount of money that were proposed to be funding this year is one point one zero four million. Um, and so, yeah, if approved, that will leave us with just over three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, uh, in, uh, these C P A funds. Uh, the projects that are recommended this year, uh, total of fourteen projects, as I mentioned. Um, half of those are historic preservation projects, and the funded amount is forty-six percent of the total. Um, Open Space and Recreation have four projects and Community Housing have three. Before we, oh, all of these applicants have gone through our full cycle, um, which I thought, uh, the council would be, um, interested to review. Um, we run on an annual cycle, and it starts in February, um, uh, with this public hearing. Um, and then shortly we'll be, um, updating our community preservation plan, having an informational hearing for potential applicants, and then the application cycle opens. We have a two-step application process. The first step is a short, pretty much one or two-page eligibility form. Um, in order to comply, to get C P A funds, projects have to meet um, a fairly clear but extensive set of requirements. Um, uh, so that, uh, before we have applicants go through the lengthy full application process, uh, this allows them to say, here's my project, uh, in basic, uh, form. Does it, uh, does it, uh, meet the basic C P A eligibilities? Um, this year we had twenty-two applications, I mentioned, um, six were eliminated, um, uh, early on because they did not comply with, um, uh, C P A eligibility requirements. Um, so, uh, that happens in March, we review and immediately inform, uh, applicants if they're good. That gives them two months to get their full application into us by May. Um, and then in the summer, uh, we assign each member, um, each applicant, uh, member from the C P C as a liaison, and we schedule site visits, have follow-on meetings with them, uh, and have each of them make a presentation uh, to the C P C about their project. I know a lot of you have reviewed the videos from those meetings, and they're really helpful because the applicants know a whole lot more about their projects than we do.
Excuse me, councillors, if somebody, um, would put your, um, microphone on mute because we're hearing some interference in the background. I'm sorry, Matt, continue.
That's okay. Um, we deliberate in August and September, part of those deliberations is to check in with Kenny Costa, our um, city auditor, to make sure that, um, we understand, uh, precisely, uh, the level of funds that we have available for projects that year. Um, and discuss, uh, what we would like to keep in reserve, um, before we do, uh, recommend those funds to the council. Um, in late September, we make our recommendations to the mayor and to you, um, and we work through um, B and F and you to, uh, get to final approval at this time in January. Um, once those funds are approved, uh, um, the grants department in the city, uh, works with our applicants to put an agreement in place and inform them how they, uh, can access their funds, and that usually uh, gets done by sometime in March, which brings us around to the start of the process again. That brings us to this year's, uh, recommended projects, um, and I've got a slide for each one of these, um, here are seven of them, um, and, uh, the next seven are here. Um, and, uh, we've, this year we've, uh, uh, will be presenting the historic preservation projects first, um, followed by the, um, uh, affordable housing, uh, community housing projects, and lastly with open space and recreation. So our first project this year is, uh, from the City of Gloucester Cemetery's Advisory Committee, um, to do some restoration at, uh, the Bayview Cemetery. Um, this is, um, uh, I think the third or fourth project that the C P C has funded uh, to the cemetery's advisory committee, um, and we, we love their projects. Um, they're, they, they always are well thought out and, um, very cost effective. Um, they, they came to us this year with a, with a fairly large, um, grant request, but that was to cover a number of years, uh, and because we had so many highly qualified applications this year, um, we were. we worked with them and agreed to recommend $30,000, which would handle most of the work that they want to do this year. And I'm not sure who might be available, if you would like to hear more about this project, but might be Chris Maney or somebody else. I'm not sure. Anybody around to speak to this? If you are, raise your hand.
Madam President.
Chris May, may he has his, his hand raised. Go ahead, Counselor Grow, was that you?
Just a question of how we're going to handle this procedurally, since we have to do a public hearing on each and every proposal. Do we, are we going to go through and get a generalized overview and then deal with the individual public hearings?
So that's a good point, because typically as part of the public hearing, we can ask questions. So that might be the time where we bring someone in. Matt, are you comfortable with that?
Certainly.
Okay. So why don't we stay, stay clear to that? Chris, so if you can hold on when, when we're at that point and we have a question when we're in the public hearing, we'll ask you. I do want to just mention, Matt, I'm not sure if you had mentioned who the nine members of the team are for the CPC. If not, can I just mention who they are?
Certainly.
Because I know most of everyone is on the call. So other than you as the chair, Hank Carl represents the planning board. He is a member. Term to be expired on February 14, 2023. Mark Pooleen represents Open Space and Recreation Committee. And his term ends on February 14, 2025. Kerry McKenna, at-large, February 14, 2024. Bill Cuff, Vice Chair, at-large, February 14, 2025, sorry. Bob Whitmarsh, Historical Commission, February 14, 2023. Jennifer Lee Levitz, Aronson, is term to be expired February 14, 2024. Bob Gula, Gula, excuse me, Conservation Commission, February 14, 2025. Excuse me. And Harry Hoglander, at-large, February 14, 2024, fulfilling Pam Toby's term. It's just important that we all know who all these players are because you work so hard for us. And, and we see that you're all on the call right now. So whether you participate or not, we appreciate your hard work. So, so let's continue. And I think maybe we'll just go, do we want to counsel Memard? Since you chair BNF, should we pause after each one, do the public hearing? And then that might be the best way to go. What do you think? Show the, show the slide, open the public hearing, committee report. Because if we go through all nine, we're going to forget by the time we get to the end. What do you think?
That's the way we handled it at Budget and Finance Committee. I think Matt's given us a good general overview of the, of the year's projects. And we should just move ahead as you've described, I think.
Okay. Any objections, counselors, without process? Okay, seeing none. So the first, the first item, go ahead.
Ask questions? Yes, Counselor Gilman, could we ask questions about this overview? We didn't get this at BNF. I love it, but I have a couple of questions.
About the overview. Okay, so let's, let's call timeout before we get to the first public hearing and we'll answer questions about the overview. So Matt, do you mind removing your screen share so we can look at each other?
Sure.
Sorry.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, so here we are. So Counsel Worthy, questions on the overview?
Yeah, sure. So first, Matt, I think you know a fan of the committee and the work you do. So my questioning is not questioning decisions, just understanding the process a little bit better. If I were an applicant or a potential applicant, I think I saw that the beginning process starts in February. How would someone go about applying? Again, and do they need to be nonprofit? Do they need to be community organization? Like, how does that work? If you could help, because there may be people on this call tonight who may have causes that would qualify and wouldn't know where to begin.
The, the way they do is to fill out an application. And the links for that application are on the CPC page on the City of Gloucester website. We also communicate that through a variety of places as we get through our February calendar and our outreach. All of the applications processes run online through the neighborly portal, which the city has put together over the last few years.
Okay, that may be helpful to someone. Thank you. Secondly, I don't know if it's the committee's decision to fund some projects in full and some lesser, depending on, depending on how well they are able to raise the money themselves, or if it's a question of, are you trying to divide the amount of money available by the number of projects? So that's a general question. And specifically, do you ever think funding one to its full capacity is more effective than funding lots of them at their, at a lower number? It's a philosophical question more than anything else, I think.
I'm not sure what the question is. Is the question, how do we make that decision?
How do you make the decision to fund in full or partially? Let's start with that part of it.
Okay. Good question. So even after we eliminated the six ineligible applications, we still had 16, I believe, with a total requested fund value of 2.1 million dollars. We had 1.1 million dollars to work with. So as we went through our deliberations and our applicant presentations and discussions, we asked each of those applications, applicants, you've asked for X. We probably can't give you X. Would you prefer to come back next year and ask for X again? Or could you be productive with X minus Y? And in the case of the cemetery project, for example, that worked well. They requested $90,000, but they're only going to be using $30,000 in year one and could replan a project that would run over three years. So there are some cases where you, you basically can't do with less. And an example might be the Action Incorporated Rental Assistance Program. I mean, if, if we give them less, we could, but the net result might be that somebody loses their home. So those are decisions that we as a committee evaluate, gather information on, and made decisions on the funding amounts.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Worthy, can we hold on a sec? And I'd like to share the floor. And Counselor Groves had his hand up for about five minutes. Counselor Gro, go ahead.
First off, Matt, thank you very much for all the work that you and your community do because I am a big, huge fan of the CPA and was very disappointed when it was voted on, that we voted at the 1% level instead of the 3% that we should have, in my view. Again, the question I have is, is back in, back when it was voted on, we were getting some state funding in addition to the funding that we were getting from individual taxpayers. Are we still getting something from the state in terms of funding every year? And is that, you know, is it, is it, is it continuing to come in, is what I, is what I'm asking?
Yes, the answer is yes. And I think it bears a little bit of a finer point. When Gloucester adopted it, the CPA had already been around for a while. And early cities and towns were getting large state matches, pretty much a one-for-one match. The more cities and towns that came in, the less was in the state pool, and so the percentage was smaller. In our early days, the match was 27% for the first three years. So if we raised half a million, we got 27% of that from the state. That actually went down for a few years because the state wasn't changing their formula on how they built their fund. And more and more cities and towns are coming in. In 2021, the state changed the formula. They build their trust fund from a portion of Registry of Deeds funds that are generated, and they boosted that. So the nice effect that we've had is that in 2022, the state match was 44%. So our local real estate tax surcharge raised $775,000 that year. We got another 322 from the state. And this past year, the state match was 39%. So it all depends on state revenues and what percentages comes in. But it's healthy right now and it'll probably stay in the 35 to 40% range for the next couple of years.
Well, I will say just very quickly that as grateful as I am for the 1% that we are currently assessing, I can't help but think of the missed opportunities we've had over the last 10 years or so and the tremendous things that we could have accomplished with that money. Because the projects that we have funded over the past years have been phenomenal and, and continue to be really, really valuable to the community. So if we ever get a chance to up that to 3%, I'd be fully behind it.
Thanks, Counselor Grow. You can take your hand down now. Who else hasn't spoken that would like to ask questions on the overview? Seeing none. So I think we're ready to go to the first public hearing. So why don't we, why don't we get Matt's screenshots ready? And you can, you can show the first slide and then we'll remove, move the slide so we can discuss it. Okay, so if you could like to open the public hearing. And let me just see. So the first public hearing is project number one, Bayview City-Owned Cemeteries Restoration, amount 30,000, applicant City of Gloucester Cemetery's Advisory Committee. And now we've opened up the public hearing. Matt, if you could just, we're just looking at this again. So if you could go through this and then remove the screen, we'll continue the public hearing.
Great. It is a proposal to restore a number of gravestones located at the Bayview Cemetery. Restoration works similar to what the cemetery's advisory committee has done at other cemeteries over the past few years. And I'll let them provide any additional detail.
Okay. Thank you. So so Chris Manny, so would you like to speak in favor?
Of course. Well, good evening to you all. And again, I'm, I'm Chris Manny from the City-Owned Cemetery Advisory Committee. We appreciate very much, you know, this awarded money. We hope that will be approved because as you all know, our city-owned cemeteries are a city asset. They are an outdoor historic landmark, you know, to, each one of them is very much, you know, filled with historical people who really, you know, cut the heritage that developed here in Gloucester. And not only do they provide a specific landmark of information, they also provide, you know, great outdoor space for the public to come and wander, investigate, and, and to explore. With the preservation of these cemeteries, that is, the city-owned cemeteries, as I said, you preserve the Gloucesters heritage, you preserve Americana with respect to the artwork, you preserve the neighborhood that abuts these cemeteries. You, you provide again, open space and a place for the general population to come. Genealogists come, scholars come who are, you know, exploring Americana. And most importantly, you protect those who are interred in those cemeteries. And, and that in itself, you know, gives respect to these sacred places. So DPW provides us, because we're a subset of DPW, they provide us labor and supplies as much as they can. It's their budget permits. Our committees are volunteers. We're working in the cemeteries. And we have a group of cemetery volunteers that come and give their time to work, you know, both in the landscape and with some work on stones. But it's through these grants like CPA and other grants that we are able to gather that allows us to restore, you know, this, these historical stones that exist within these historical lands, you know, landmarks of Gloucester. And if you have any questions, please, you know, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Chris. So we'll get back to the questions in a few moments. Thank you for that overview. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences on this public hearing?
There are none.
Counselors, now is your opportunity to have any questions answered on project number one. Seeing none. Oh, Counselor O'Neil.
Yes, I have a question. The $30,000 is for restoring the, mostly for restoring gravestones? So, and cleaning up several cemeteries? Is that correct? So it would be mostly labor?
Counselor O'Neil, with respect to the 30,000, Bayview has over 150 stones. And most of those stones need to be repaired, either because they're off their, off their bases. They've been fragmented, they're delaminating. So of that 30,000, the money is just focused on Bayview Cemetery off Washington Street. And that will cover a third of the restoration of stones. You're correct on that. And with respect to in-kind work, DPW provides some in-kind work. And then we have cemetery volunteers like myself who will go in there and work with respect to the landscape and cleaning stones. So we have a tremendous in-kind work that also is applied, you know, to this particular contractor grant, CPA contractor grant. And the goal is
ahead.
I'm sorry.
I cut you off. You can continue. You were going to say something more and I cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. You have, this cemetery is one of our colonial, you know, pastoral cemeteries. It was established in 1728 when Third Parish of Anasquam was established. And this covered the areas of Diamond Cove, which was the old name for Bayview. It covered Lanesville, it covered Anasquam, and it covered Sandy Bay from about 1738 to 17, you know, 54. So you can see a tremendous population is involved with this, you know, that is interred within this particular cemetery.
So, thank you.
What is the answer to my question?
Your question is that one-third, one-third of the cemetery, the money will be used as one-third of the, to restore the, the headstones and the markers for one-third of Bayview Cemetery.
Okay, so it is mostly labor for restoration, correct?
Yes, that 30,000. But again, please keep in mind, there's, there's at least, there's at least probably $7,500 worth of in-kind work that will be provided by volunteers. And, and there will be also money, in-kind work provided by DPW.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions, counselors? Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. And ask for the committee report from Counsel Memard. Chris, you can take your hand down now. So thank you.
Thank you very much, guy. Thank you.
Yes, at Budget and Finance, each of these presentations was reviewed individually with the presenters, the applicants. And again, as you're aware, that is available on Zoom as well as the CPC video interviews and discussions about each of these projects. Relating to this first one, on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend the city council appropriate up to $30,000 from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to the Gloucester, the City of Gloucester Cemetery Cemetery's Advisory Committee for the purpose of supporting the preservation of the Bayview Cemetery in repair of grave site and grave sites in order to restore an historic resource. The appropriations allocated to the historic preservation category and funded from unrestricted reserves and Fund 4500. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund, Historic Preservation Capital Projects Fund, number 5812. And I still move.
Second.
Counsel Memard made the motion, and I think it was Counsel Gross who seconded it. Did I get that right? Okay. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthy?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman? Yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counseler Memard?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk. You're muted, Joanne.
Okay, so the next project would be Magnolia Library Building renovation. The amount of fifty thousand dollars. The applicant is Magnolia Library Center.
Hey, thank you. Matt, if you could screenshot that, that would be great. Council O'Hara has his hand raised.
I'm going to, yes, this is the Magnolia Library. I'm past president, longtime board member. So I'm going to abstain from this vote, please.
Okay, thank you, counselor. So Matt, you have the floor.
Yes, this project is
Wait, 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 wait. I don't think I, did I officially open up the public hearing? I don't think I did. I'm sorry. I'd like to open up the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak in favor. So Matt, you have the floor. Thank you.
Certainly. The Magnolia Library applied for funds to do some outside renovation in the exterior of their building. And I should mention that for all historic preservation projects, I mentioned that we we have applicants do a short eligibility application first. For any project to be approved as an historic preservation project, that project act either has to be in the Massachusetts Registry of Historic Places or it has to be recognized by the Gloucester Historical Commission as having historic significance. And the Magnolia Library Building certainly is one of those. They have some fairly significant work that needs to be done in the building. As you can see, their original request was for almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But their project can be segmented very well. The amount that we are recommending for funding is fifty thousand dollars. And that's going to take care of one components of of their windows and not the entire project that they would like to do and they still plan to do over time. They've been a, we've done at least a couple of projects with them in the past, and they've been a very good steward of of taxpayer money, and they've done a good job with their projects. I know that with us this evening is Kylie Davis, who is with the Magnolia Library. And she can raise her hand to make it easier to find her. Perhaps she can speak to more of this for you.
Okay, and Kylie, we're going to ask that you keep your speech to three minutes because we have to, we've got a lot of these tonight. And Joanne, if you would do the timing, that would be great. So we'd love to hear why you're supporting this, Kylie. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll be pretty quick. We had originally proposed to replace all of the windows in our Charles Jones Hall as well as new doors and replacement of our ancient bulkhead with the money that the CPA is going to hopefully be awarding us finally tonight. And with what we will be using from our own coffers, we've decided to fully replace all of the windows in the Charles Jones Hall. That's a total of fifteen windows. What's really important about them is they are an important piece of the aesthetic of our building. So the new windows have been designed to mimic the current windows, but also offer us what all new windows do, better insulation and allow us to hopefully make a lot of savings on our heating and oil bills. As many of you know, the room that I'm discussing is the one where we do our polling in our ward. And the windows are very high up. So to get them all replaced at one time is really important to us, but also to keep them in the look of the building. So it maintains its historic character is also important. This was determined to be a high-level project by the Board of Directors. And so, which was why we applied to CPA. We're really excited to get started. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
Okay, we'll hold on the questions right now. We'll ask if anyone else would like to speak in favor. Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Is there any correspondence on this, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Seeing none. Counselors, any questions? Council O'Neil?
Yes, I don't know if I should ask Kylie or Matt, but by accepting these funds, does that, is the Magnolia Library open to the public?
Kylie, I'll let you answer that question, or Matt, whomever.
So the Magnolia Library and Community Center, okay. The Magnolia Library and Community Center can be a little bit confusing for people. But we are a five oh one C three non-for-profit coded library, which means anybody can come into our building and get a library card for free and take out our books. We also have the other piece, which is our community center. And that's where we run the polling out of, or any of our community events that many of you have attended in the past. We are open to the public. Our doors may not always be open because we are a hundred percent run volunteer organization. We currently are open five days a week in our library, and that is the most we've been open in over fifteen years. So it's not a regular library that runs, you know, eight to five, Monday through Sunday. But we are a community center that our doors are open to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions, counselors? Seeing none. I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Council Memard.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Council Worthley, Budget and Fin- Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend City Council appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding for the Magnolia Library Center for the purpose of supporting the restoration and preservation of the exterior building of the Magnolia Library in order to restore an historic resource. The appropriation will be allocated to the Historic Preservation category, funded from the unrestricted reserves and Fund four five zero zero. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund, Historic Preservation Projects Fund, number four seven five four, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, counselors? Council Nolan?
Not much of a discussion, but much of the thanks to Kylie Davis and the Magnolia Library Board for putting the energy forth to protect and help better a community center that very much is a community center. We've never been refused a public meeting with open arms. It's always been excellent. The help from the staff, the programs, the community are unbelievable in leaps and bounds in the last ten years. And I couldn't think of a better place to spend fifty grand right now with the CPC. And I want to thank everybody involved in this.
Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion? I would like to just comment that I've been there many times for the blood drive that Council O'Hara has always led, for arts and crafts shows, for events that, for the elections. And the, the, the feeling there is just vibrant and exciting. So it's a great community resource. So we appreciate that. Any further discussion, counselors, on the motion? Council O'Neil?
Can I, can I ask a question as opposed to?
We're kind of going backwards, but I will, I will suspend the rules of procedure to ask you, to allow you to ask a question.
Okay, you mentioned the blood, okay, thank you. You mentioned the blood drives, and I haven't gotten a notice for a while for a blood drive. I'm wondering if they're still doing that?
I believe it's been in the past. I think that they're now doing it at the Our Lady of Good Voyage Church, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, thank you.
We do still host
I'm sorry?
What?
Go ahead.
We still host blood drives for the American Red Cross.
Oh, you do?
We have about three, one, two of them. The most recent have been canceled due to staffing issues with the Red Cross.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Council O'Hara, oh, Council O'Hara has abstained. Council O'Neil?
Absolutely, yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Absolutely, thank you.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one abstained. Thank you so much, Kylie and Matt, for that presentation. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Project number three is the Manship Artist Residency Design Project in the amount of fifty thousand. Manship Artist Residence and Studios Inc. is the applicant.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing, and I would like to mention that I've been on the board of the Manship Artist Residency for two or three years, but I have not been on the board for a year and a half. And I have no financial interest, so I do not have a conflict, and I plan on voting on this. So Matt, if you could begin this, we open the public hearing and tell us about this request.
Thank you. The Manship Artist Residencies are in Lanesville, overseeing the quarry that Paul Manship did much of his later work at. There are two buildings on the property relative to this project. Both of them have significant historic interest. The project proposal from the Manship Artist Residency is to fund a fully developed plan that puts everything in place to do actual work on the two buildings. The projected cost is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for full project cost. They'd originally requested a hundred thousand dollars. We worked with them to see whether fifty thousand dollars would be useful. They said yes, and so that's what we've recommended here. I know that there's several people from Manship here this evening. So if whoever would speak to the project would raise your hand, that would help Joanne promote the correct person to speak further to your project.
Great, thank you. Okay, we see a Manship Artist Residency. I bet it's either Rebecca or Joanne. Would you introduce yourself and your name, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us about this exciting project? And Joanne, if you could do the timing, that would be great.
Yes, thank you so much. This is Rebecca Reynolds. I'm one of the co-founders and the executive director at Manship. We also have with us Fred Groth, who's the chair of the Buildings and Ground, and co-founder Joanne Costano, who is the chair of the board. We are so grateful to be considered. This time, this is the first time we've, we're receiving funds from the CPC. This is for the second phase of our development, which will really ensure the long-term preservation of the site. We are under the Historic Preservation category, but I do want to mention that we are also open space and recreation part of the time. Our primary focus is artist residency, and when the artists are in residence, you know, we ask people not to just show up and disturb them. But otherwise, we do have public events that we plan and other community happenings that we are, activities that we're so, you know, we're really eager to welcome people to. And thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much, Rebecca, for all you do. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Is there any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
There is none.
Are there any questions, counselors? Council O'Neil?
Thank you. I have never heard of this, so on the slide, it said architectural and zoning, and I don't know what else. Are you building a
No.
For artists?
No, so as Matt had mentioned, it's a historic site. It was the former Summer Residence and Studio of Paul Manship. And we have preserved it thanks to funds from the Mass Cultural Council and our community to continue its intended use as an artist residency. And really, even when the Manships were there, it was very much a community, a place for the community to come and gather at times. We are, we've hired Epstein Jocelyn Associates, who many people may know they were responsible for the design of the Shaylin Lou, to be the architect to help us develop a design concept. The buildings are very significant, but also the land. It's a site of two former quarries and Epstein Jocelyn is working with Stimson Studios, which is a landscape architectural firm, which has, you know, wonderful record of working really with the land and really wonderful connections between historic site or or buildings, in any case, they don't have to be historic, and the surrounding environment. So the idea here is to look at, you know, the best way to develop the property. There's some amenities that we need to upgrade. We would like to introduce ADA accessibility standards in in our buildings. The site, when we assumed it five years ago, was in great need of attention. And we have spent considerable money in the last five years doing, you know, maintenance and urgent repairs. We're really at a stage where we need to look at how we can use the barn itself. It has a residence and a barn. It was Paul Manship Studio to develop it, to have more studio spaces for the residents who come and also to use it for exhibition and performance spaces that we would invite our community to. So it's not that we are planning to build anything. I know it seems like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project is a lot for for this, but it's a historic site. You know, once you're dealing with a historic site, you can be guaranteed at least twenty-five percent more in the cost of everything because of all the great care that you need to take and approvals and permitting that has to happen at this site.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other further questions, counselors?
Can I also just say one thing? I would love to have you all come and visit and see the site.
Yeah, that would be great. Council O'Neil, anyone else like to speak besides Council O'Neil on this public hearing? Seeing none, Council, you have the floor for a second question.
Thank you. Can you tell me where this is? I don't know where this is.
It's in Lanesville.
Yep, we're, we're
It's very near to, it's across from the Orthodox Congregational Church. It's on Leverett Street. It's a try Leverett, yeah, it's a triangle. The entrance is at Leverett, but it's a, basically it's a triangle of land that extends from the corner of Washington Street and Leverett. It's just over fifteen acres.
Okay, and you said that you're going to use the money to develop the property because you need more amenities and ADA accessory. I, what do you mean by develop the property? And it sounds like you need to fix some buildings. How many buildings?
Exactly right, yeah. So there are two main buildings that we're addressing. Actually, the main building we'll be addressing with this in terms of development and improving amenities is the barn. When we first bought the property, we spent a year and a half fixing up the house to some degree. It's not complete. We'll have to come back to this. You will see us again. This past year, we did restore a small studio on the site in the grounds. But we need to have, you know, we've been doing things piecemeal. And it's very important for us now to have a design concept for the, you know, for the entire property, for both of the buildings, to see how we can use them to the best, you know, ability for the residents that are coming to stay there and the, and the community events that we have.
Okay, so there will be residents living there?
Yeah, so the residents come for a period, or at least they have so far, from anywhere from, you know, four days to the most was three months during the lockdown. We had the residents stay there during the lockdown. So generally, these are temporary stays. Artists, an artist residency offers So generally, these are temporary stays. Artists, an artist residency offers time and space to artists to come and, you know, pursue their creative process. Often, they're working in community together within the house or within the larger community, and we have done all of that.
Okay, I just have one more question. How many artists, how many, how many artists would be staying there at a time? I'm just very curious about this. I've never heard of it, so thank you for putting up with me. I appreciate it.
This is something that we are, you know, that's part of the plan that will determine how many could, could stay there. We were advised to start slow and we did and we opened in May twenty nineteen. We had, the most we had at that time was three artists and then the pandemic hit and then we had to do fewer. We have had, for a very short period, eight people staying there. That was very rare, not something that we will be doing very often, but generally, you know, three to five artists are what we're expecting will be able to stay there.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions, counselors? Matt Lombard, so you're not really a counselor, but I will ask you with a, counselors to suspend the rules of procedures. Now, counsel questions in the public hearing, but in respect to Matt, I'd like to allow him to speak. So without objection, go ahead, Matt.
I was only, I wanted to add to Rebecca's answer to Tracy. Tracy, your, your question was relevant because this is a historic preservation grant from the CPC and as such, it can only be used towards the preservation of an historic resource. The historic resources identified at Manship are these two buildings. So they may have other plans to do other work to further develop that whole property and make it work better for their programs, but our grant is only towards the preservation of those two buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. That's really helpful. Okay, so without further questions, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report by Counsel Memard.
Thank you. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to the Manship Artist Residence and Studio Studios Inc. for the purpose of supporting the preservation and restorations of the Manship Artist Residency in order to restore an historic resource. The appropriation will be allocated to the Historic Preservation category and funded from the unrestricted reserves and Fund 4500. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Projects Fund number 4755. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors? Counsel Grow.
I just wanted to take a second to, to join Tracy in acknowledging the lack of knowledge that I had about the Manship facility. And while I was listening to this, I cheated and went to Wikipedia. I think everybody should go check out Wikipedia on this for a little basic information about his incredible contributions to Gloucester's history in the arts. And if nothing else, you've all seen this Prometheus Rockefeller Center iconic statue, a product of a Gloucester artist. I think it's pretty, pretty, pretty nifty and I'm glad to be supporting this grant.
Counsel, does anyone else like to speak to this motion? Counsel Nolan.
I just want to thank Rebecca and the committee for their work. It's come a long way. It's a great place, even if it's just for the solitude of the art and the area. And thank you for all your hard work.
And counselors, I'd be happy to set up a, the property is absolutely beautiful. And the barn is just touching. When you go into the barn and you see just all the history, it's of art and sculpturing. It's just, it's just, and with the quarries and seeing, having the pleasure of seeing artists staying there and doing internships and just getting a feel for the natural environment and enjoying their talents. It's really awesome. So I will be supporting this and I so much appreciate the history. It's my ward and I'm very proud of it. So, so any further, further discussions? Seeing none, go ahead.
Say one more thing. I mean, in terms of an artist residency, a lot of people don't realize the benefit. But we have had a number of people who have been in residence, who have come there, fallen in love with Cape Ann and have moved here. And I just want to point out that one who we were really so happy to be able to claim in this way is Miranda Ashleen, who's at the Cape Ann Museum. And last weekend, you all saw So Salty happening in Gloucester. I mean, this is what the artists do in our community and we are really grateful to be a part of helping enrich the community in this way.
Thank you so much. Further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Counsel O'Hara. You are unmute. Okay, thank you. Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Gratefully, yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel. Did I say Counsel Gross? I'm sorry, Counsel Grow, yes. Sorry, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This is project number four, the waterfront resiliency survey in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. The applicant is Maritime Gloucester.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Matt Lombard to do his first slide.
Thank you. The next project is with Maritime Gloucester and a proposal to make waterfront resiliency improvements to their property. Their total project cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They initially requested a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the CPA. We are recommending that we provide them with a hundred thousand dollars after discussions with Maritime Gloucester on how they could still accomplish their project. I believe that Michael DeCosta is here representing Maritime Gloucester and I will let him speak more to the project.
Okay, thank you, Matt. So Michael, if you want to speak in favor, you have up to three minutes and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Name an address if you wouldn't mind.
Michael DeCosta, it is twenty-eight Rosedale Road in Watertown, but I should say twenty-three Harbor Loop because I've lived here more than I live there. So thank you so much, everyone, for the time tonight. I'm going to keep my remarks uncharacteristically brief. I've been here for four years, serving as Executive Director of Maritime Gloucester and coming up on my fifth year. In the time that I've been here, I have seen one flood. I've seen two in the last month. One month ago, last, the day before Christmas, we had six inches of water in our building. Yesterday, we had, the water was coming up through the aquarium and up over the side of the wall and only because of sandbags did we keep it out of our building. We are definitely seeing a trend towards the need to re-make, mediate our waterfront and we have applied to other grants for some things like doing, moving our transformer and such. But the middle classroom and one of our historic buildings is in need of some protection. Doing this wall and regrading our walkway that goes out to the pier is just a much-needed thing for both our site and for the community to be able to enjoy all the work that we do preserving Gloucester's working waterfront and cultural heritage. And with that, I will take any questions if anyone has or afterwards, I'm sorry about, I didn't mean to step you, but step on your toes there. But I'd be happy to take any questions later from anyone who has any questions about what we do and how we do it.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, but is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
There are no correspondence.
Okay, counselors, any questions? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Counsel Memard.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appropriate up to one hundred thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to Maritime Gloucester for the purpose of supporting the waterfront resiliency survey in order to, to restore an historic resource. The appropriation will be allocated to the Historic Preservation category and funded from unrestricted reserves and Fund 4500. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Act Fund Historic Preservation Projects Fund 4756. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota. Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Mike.
Madam Chair, could I just say that I really appreciate the work that the CBA does? The application process was long, but their help and their guidance through it was really, really instrumental and they do great work. If only I can find some contractors to give me that kind of assistance, we will be happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. So much appreciated. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is project number five, Our Lady of Good Voyage Bell Tower Restoration in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. The applicant is Our Lady of Good Voyage Parish.
So I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Matt to speak.
Madam President.
Yes.
So I've checked, yes, I've checked, no conflict of interest issues because I don't make money at the bell tower of the church, but I do play organ for the Catholic churches in Gloucester and Our Lady of Good Voyage Church is one of them, so there's no appearance of a conflict. I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Worthley.
Thank you.
So you have the floor, Matt, to begin the, the public hearing.
Thank you. Our next recommended project this evening is for the restoration of the Good Voyage, Our Lady of Good Voyage Bell Towers. As many of you probably know, a storm a couple of years ago rendered some significant damage to one of the towers on the backside. Frankly, I didn't know this was as bad as it was because I never saw it. And by the time I was up there, they'd already done a temporary repair on it. Both towers are in dire need of restoration. Total project cost is three hundred thousand dollars. We are recommending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We've worked closely with the church on managing that budget. With us tonight is Cindy Cifasso-Donaldson, who can speak more to the project.
Great, thank you. Cindy, welcome and you have up to three minutes to chat with us. And Counsel Majota, are you, are you around? Oh, good. Okay, as long as you're listening to us, I just want to make sure that you're hearing us. Thank you. So Cindy, you have the floor. Introduce yourself and your address and welcome to the public hearing.
Thank you very much. My name is Cindy Cifasso-Donaldson. I live at fifty-four Ledge Road in Gloucester. And I appreciate the opportunity to present this project to you. As you are probably all aware, Our Lady of Good Voyage Church is an iconic Gloucester landmark that sits above the harbor and actually is, is used to guide some, some of our boats and ships into the, into the harbor. It's listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. And very unusually, the church houses a very historically significant carillon. A carillon is, our carillon is a set of thirty-one bells, the largest of which is two, over two thousand pounds. So this is a very heavy structure that is suspended in the bell tower. And with the, with the destruction of the roof, we have a lot of leaking into the bell towers. There's leaking into both bell towers because of the age of the roofs. But the destruction of the roof has caused a lot of damage and leaking inside. It threatens the integrity of the actual tower and the integrity, therefore the integrity of the carillon, which is bolted into the tower. The one other point I would make is that the, the greater community enjoys the music from the carillon because it is best heard from outside of the church. So we offer weekly concerts, short concerts on Sunday mornings and then a series of community concerts where people park in our parking lot and enjoy snacks and maybe a drink or two during August and September. Those are weekly concerts. We off, we try to reflect not only our religious music, but also other music from other religions according to what is relevant, for instance, Rosh Hashanah, Hanukkah, Kowali, Kwanzaa. We, we played all of that music at those, at the times of those holidays. We play seasonal music and we play patriotic music from the, from the US, but also from around the world. And finally, the carillon attracts an amazing amount of visitors from around the United States as well as from around the world. It's relatively well-known. Oh, is my time up? So a lot of people come to see it. So we attract people to Gloucester. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone else like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Are there any questions, counselors? Seeing none, is there a committee report? Counsel Memard.
Yes, indeed. Budget and Finance voted.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on. Like to close the public hearing, sorry. I've got to be on my game here. I'm getting, I'm getting a little bit tired, but I'm so sorry. But I've got my gavel and I hit it. So now you can do the committee report, Counsel Memard, sorry.
Ouch. Finance voted two in favor, zero opposed, with Counsel Worthley recusing himself to recommend the City Council appropriate up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding for Our Lady of Good Voyage Parish for the purpose of restore, restoration and preservation of the bell tower in order, in order to preserve, restore an historic resource. The appropriation will be allocated to the Historic Preservation category and funded from unrestricted reserves and Fund 4500. And the project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Projects Fund number 4757. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gilman. Is there a discussion, counselors? Counsel O'Neill.
Yes, hi, I would like to say I'm in full support of this. And I'd like to ask Cindy, is, is Our Lady's bell carillon or carillon the only working carillon in the country that's played manually? Is that right?
Counselors, just hold, hold on just a second. Counselors, without objection, I would like to suspend the rules of procedures and allow Tracy O'Neill to ask a question. Without objection, go ahead, Counsel O'Neill. Go ahead, Cindy.
Thank you, Tracy. The Our Lady of Good Voyage carillon was the first tuned carillon to be brought into the United States a hundred years ago, a hundred and one years ago now. It is not the only one. There are about two hundred carillons in the United States, six in Massachusetts. It is not the only one. There are about 200 carillons in the United States, six in Massachusetts.
Wow. And I guess that's it. I would like to, if you would reach out to me, my email address is on the city website. I'd like to talk to you further. I don't want to take up everyone's time tonight, but I might like to talk with you in detail, if that's okay.
I would love that. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley? Oh, he abstained. Okay, sorry. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one abstained. Thank you so much, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
Thank Father Jim as well.
Thank you, Cindy.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This is project number six, the Saunders House HVAC in the amount of $100,000. The applicant is Gloucester Lyceum and Sawyer Free Library.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Matt to, against, share your screen.
Thank you, Val. This next project is a new HVAC system for the Saunders House at the Sawyer Free Library. This is the original old house that is directly on the corner of Dale Avenue and Middle Street. The total project cost is $375,000. The amount that we're recommending to grant CPA funds to the Sawyer Free Library is $100,000, and this is a historic preservation project. I know that there are several people from the library here this evening, so whoever is going to speak, if you could raise your hand, and they will provide more information about the project.
Thank you. So would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us about why you're supporting this project?
Good evening, councilors. This is Library Director Jenny Benedict. Thank you so much for considering this award this evening. So the library embarked on an extensive renovation and restoration of Saunders House several years ago. To date, we've completed the restoration of the WPA murals and the structural stabilization work that last year was awarded through the CPA is currently underway. Our next phase is to address the work needed to remedy deficiencies of the building and make it suitable for contemporary use by bringing building systems up to current standards. Our most pressing need is for an HVAC system. So currently, we have a patchwork of systems and controls for heating, ventilation, and cooling, and they result in inefficient performance, inconsistent temperature and humidity levels, and inadequate ventilation and ineffective filtration. So we have an oil-pued furnace boiler in Saunders House and radiators, and they are controlled by one zone on the first floor, and those are supplemented with window air conditioning in the summer. The oil-fired cast-iron Wheel McLean boiler was manufactured in October of 1996 and will be 27 years old this year. It has served us extraordinarily well, has had regular maintenance and repairs done on it, but it has needed to be replaced for several years. So it's become increasingly unreliable. We've had three shuts down so far this winter, and last year it required 16 unscheduled maintenance visits. So our goal is to have a new system in place before next winter. The library is requesting CPA funds to help with the cost in installing a modern, all-electric and environmentally sustainable new HVAC system, and it will match the system that's planned in the larger renovation and expansion of the library. As mentioned, the estimated cost is $375,000, and we're grateful for the recommended $100,000 from CPA funds. The Sawyer Free Library will fund the remaining cost from other grants and from corporate funds. So the new HVAC system is going to help preserve and protect the historic building's unique structures and features with improved indoor climate and air quality, and will also make the space much more hospitable for staff and for the public in the building. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you so much, Jenny. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any questions? I'm sorry, any correspondence or communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Any questions, councilors? Council Grow?
I think I know the answer to this, but I just wanted to be clear. This is a separate project from the renovation of the main library itself. So this is completely unrelated to the borrowing that was being done for that.
That's correct, Council Grow.
Thank you. Any further questions, councilors? Seeing none, I'd like to close public hearing and ask for a committee report by Council Memard.
Yes, budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appropriate up to $100,000 from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to the Gloucester Lyceum and Sawyer Free Library for the purpose of supporting the implementation of a HVAC system in the Saunders House in order to restore an historic resource. The appropriation will be allocated to the historic preservation category and funded from unrestricted funds, reserves in Fund 4500. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Projects Fund number 4758 and ISO move.
Second.
A motion made by council members, seconded by council Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is project number seven, the Adventure Schooner Rudder Project in the amount of $50,000. The applicant is the Gloucester Adventure, Inc.
Like to open the public hearing and ask Matt to share a screen. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. This is our seventh project of the evening. It's our last historic preservation project, and it's for Adventure. They have identified a fairly significant amount of restoration work to be done on the parts of the boat that most people don't normally see. The total project cost is $161,528. We're recommending a grant to Schooner Adventure of $50,000. I believe Bill Barton is here this evening. If you could raise your hand, Bill, so we can easily add you, and he can share more about the project with you.
Great, thank you. So, Bill, if you would introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to speak to us on this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present to you. I'll just briefly talk about the significance of Adventure. She is a local story but national significant. She talks to Gloucester's whole history and the fisheries and feeding a growing country in the world. And she is one of two national historic landmarks that fall within the bounds of Gloucester. We also feel that the work is going to help us present ourselves well during the 400. The vessel underwent a major restoration project that was completed several years ago to get her back into sailing condition. But any historic vessel approaching 100 years, you periodically have to do preservation work to make sure that that full restoration stays intact. And so this is a preservation effort. And it deals with, as Matt said, a variety of things that you don't normally see. It includes replacing the rudder on the vessel, replacing the propeller, doing a variety of planks, bullocks and nightheads, and also some caulking along the length of the vessel above the keel, and also a protective strip on the bottom of the vessel. So it's really designed to make sure that we don't have to one day do a full restoration again. It's really sort of insurance against that. And it's a project that's going to cost about $161,000. And touching on Counselor Worthley's question earlier about how much funds, how much of a project gets funded by the CPC, we really feel that getting the $50,000 from the Community Preservation Act helps us leverage other funds. So we're looking to get about 31% of the project cost from the Community Preservation Act, but it does help us go out and raise other funds to have that support from the town itself. That's just my brief overview, and I'm happy to answer any question.
Okay, great. Bill, will you just tell us what your address is, just for the record?
Sure. Sorry about that. My name is Bill Barton. My address is 1 West Beach Lane in Beverly.
Thank you so much.
The Scooner Adventure.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone want to speak opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, is there any correspondence?
There are none.
Any questions, councilors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask council member to do the committee report.
Thank you. Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appropriate up to $50,000 from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to Gloucester Adventure, Inc. for the purpose of restoring the Adventure Schooner's Rudder in order to restore a historic resource. The appropriation will be allocated to the historic preservation category and funded from unrestricted reserves in Fund 4500. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Act Fund Historic Preservation Projects Fund number 4759 and ISO move.
Second.
Second.
The motion was made by Council Memard, and it was seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. And in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much, Bill.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Council Worthley.
Could I ask for a three-minute break? We've been going at this for three hours and that would help.
We'll take a three-minute break, and we'll convene back at 10 minutes past nine. But do need a roll call vote. So motion made, Council Worthley, I'll second it. Roll call vote, Council O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Worthley?
Yes.
Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Majota? Yes, I can read his lips. Memard?
Yeah, I'd already taken my break, too. Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Let's keep it real quick, okay? We'll be back in about three or four minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, you're back?
Yes.
Great, all right. Our recess has been completed. Welcome back. We're continuing our meeting of January 24, 2023, and we are now on item eight of budget and finance report for our CPC approvals.
We're halfway.
Yeah, I think we're a little bit more than that, aren't we? Oh, my God. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, next order of business.
It's project number eight, the Tenant-Based Rental Mortgage Assistance Program in the amount of $200,000. The applicant is Action, Inc.
Like to open the public hearing and ask Matt to review the application.
Thank you. This is our first of three community housing recommendations for the council this evening. It's to Action Incorporated for their Tenant-Based Rental Mortgage Assistance Program. This is the same program that we have funded a couple of times in recent years. Excuse me. We're big fans of this program. It needs such an important need, and it is managed by such a wonderful organization. The only other comment I'll make about it before turning it over to Action is that this is the first year that we've been able to get them into our regular funding cycle. When pandemic hit, they were slammed so hard that we did fund them using our off-cycle application process, which allowed us to get money to them without having to wait for a year. But I think we understand each other's budgets much better now. And with that, I'll turn this over to Action. I'm going to guess it's Allison Lex speaking this evening, but if it's somebody else, raise your hand.
Great. Allison, if you would introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to speak to our council. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, my name is Allison Lex. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Action, Inc., and my address is 166 Shaw Sheen Road in Andover. Thank you for considering our request for CPA funds to continue supporting our Tenant-Based Rental and Mortgage Assistance Program at Action, Inc. As Matt has mentioned, we've operated this program with the city's support for a number of years. The program itself has been run by Action for more than 15 years, and the city has been a key partner throughout a lot of that, a lot of that time period. These funds from the city would allow Action to support 40 Gloucester households that are at risk of eviction or foreclosure by providing them with short-term housing assistance. During the height of COVID, we saw a significant increase at Action from Gloucester households that were struggling to afford their housing costs due to income instability, job loss, increased cost of living, COVID-related childcare disruptions, and more. Through our program, we served five times as many Gloucester households in calendar 2021, calendar year 2021 compared to before the pandemic. We served 145 residents that year compared to 28 during the year prior. And the majority of the households we serve through this program have household incomes that are below 30% area median income, which means the income for a family of four is at or below $42,000 a year. Unfortunately, while COVID case numbers have decreased in the community, we continue to see the same significant need for housing supports among the individuals that we serve. We, as an organization, leverage these CPA funds with other state and federal funds as well as private donations. All of those funds go to cover our staff's time operating the program. So the funding from the CPA goes directly to residents by payments to their landlord or their mortgage company in order to help them make ends meet for their housing costs. We also use the funds that we leverage to provide additional assistance beyond what is available through the CPA if people have additional rental or mortgage assistance-related needs, and we also help with security deposits and utility arrears. We make sure that recipients of the funds are connected to other services we provide that can help households become more stable, such as education and job training, benefits assistance, fuel assistance, and financial counseling. And we refer our program participants to other community-based organizations that can help ensure they receive the comprehensive supports that they need. This grant has been critical to helping us enable families to remain in Gloucester when they're facing housing insecurity, and we hope that we can continue to count on the city's partnership for this vital program. Thank you for your time, and both myself and our Director of Community Services, Karen Clifford, are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Allison. Would anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none? Seeing none? Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? It's not anybody else. Seeing none? Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences?
There are none.
Councillors, any questions? Council Grow, questions?
Yeah, questions. Are you seeing an increase? We obviously had impact because of COVID and the jobless issues that created. But are we also seeing increases in need due to increases in rent and housing costs in general for people? And also, at the same time, are you seeing a change in the demographics of the people that are being affected?
So, yes, definitely. I'm going to refer to Karen Clifford to answer that question, if she's available.
Karen, would you introduce yourself and your address? And if you answer Council Grow's question, that would be great. Welcome.
I'm Karen Clifford, the Director of Community Services. Thank you. My address is 21 Pond Street in Marblehead. We are definitely seeing an increased need due to the rising costs of rent. It's not everybody, but there are certainly a good number of people who have barely anything left over in their monthly budget. And some people whose rent is less than their monthly budget. So being able to help those people because with the rising cost of rent, it's not just about retaining that tenancy. But if they have to move somewhere else, then they might need a security deposit, a first month's rent, a last month's rent. So at that point, it's just not affordable for them to move anywhere else either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions, councillors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for a committee report from council member.
Thank you. Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council appropriate up to $200,000 from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding for the purpose of the Action, Inc. Tenant-Based Rental/Mortgage Assistance Program. The appropriation will be allocated to the community housing category and funded from the unrestricted reserves in Fund 4500. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund, Community Housing Projects Fund number 4904, and I so move.
Second.
Motion was made by council member and seconded by council Gross. Is there a discussion? Council Grow.
Just want to take the opportunity once again to point out that this is a bellwether of affordability in the entire community, and that it is a sign of our inability, frankly, to address the issue of housing that's affordable and affordable housing in our community. And we need to be doing a hell of a lot more and a lot more, a lot sooner in addressing this problem, or it's only going to continue to grow. I'm grateful for everything that Action is doing. I'm sorry that they have to exist. But as long as they do, we should be supporting them as much as we can.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yeah.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memmerd.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Allison and Karen. Appreciate it. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is project nine, Main Street Affordable Housing in the amount of $100,000. The applicant is Harbor Light Community Partners, Inc.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Matt Lumberg to give us an overview.
Thank you. This project is from Harbor Light Community Partners. It is the Main Street Affordable Housing Project, which is to develop the vacant lot next to Nelson's on Main Street and build affordable housing for area seniors. It's a $9 million project. They requested $200,000 from the CPA. We are granting $100,000. And it is eligible as a community housing project. I believe Andrew Leonard is here this evening from Harbor Light, who can speak more to the project and take it away.
Great, thank you. Andrew, welcome, and you have three minutes to chat with our council and speak in favor. Thank you. Could you introduce yourself and your address? That would be great.
Sure. Thanks, everyone, for your attention to this today. So my name is Andrew Leonard. I live at 6 Holborn Avenue in Beverly. And I'm with Harbor Light, and we're an affordable housing developer. We focus exclusively on affordable housing here on the North Shore, so kind of as far south as Lynn, up towards Ipswich, and then across Cape Ann as well. So this opportunity came about through an RFP from the Gloucester Housing Authority. They're the current owners of this lot, and they put it out to bid for a developer to develop senior housing on the lot. We applied in that RFP and were awarded it, and our proposal is for the construction of 20 units of affordable senior housing. So these would be one-bedroom units for seniors. And our idea here is that we create a model that allows area seniors to age in place affordably. So we create an environment where service riders can come in and kind of have a key, a critical mass of residents that they can serve and make it efficient for them as well. But, you know, it's a typical apartment building. It's not an assisted living facility. It's truly members living within the community on their own with the services they need. And obviously, you probably saw our total project cost would be upwards of $9 million, and we're requesting 200,000 recommendations for 100. And that 100 may seem small against that 9 million, but it's really critical for two reasons. One, construction costs are very high right now. And, you know, with our affordability, we're limited in how much we can borrow. And additionally, by having a financial commitment from the city, that is a real boost to us when we go to get financing from the state for tax credit and other supportive debt. So we really appreciate the consideration that's been given to this today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Anyone else like to speak in favor? David Holden, come on in. Thank you for being here. If you'd introduce yourself, even though we all know who you are, but please do.
Yes, my name is David Holden. I'm honored to be the Executive Director of the Gloucester Housing Authority, and I live at 98 Bachelor Street in West Newbury. Just some background on this parcel. It was purchased by the Housing Authority back in 1980 and was originally scheduled to become a state-aided elderly housing development that was to begin construction after we completed the Armory building on Prospect Street. This lies strictly in front of that or behind it, depending on how you're looking at it. Unfortunately, shortly after the Armory was finished, something called the Massachusetts Miracle went bust, and the money that was associated for developing this project went away. However, the requirements in our purchasing that property require that it must be built and developed as elderly housing at some point. We were able to reach an agreement with the state where we were allowed to let the city use it as a parking area for a nominal fee while we were looking for development options for the site, which had taken 30 years. During the course, we identified a major need in our community for housing for seniors who needed supportive services to remain independent. In many cases, seniors with similar needs have gone to assisted living developments. But as we all know, Cape Ann lacks in assisted living development, and also assisted living is financially far out of the reach for most of the citizens within our community. We issued an RFP last year. We received two very competitive proposals, but we really believed that Harbor Lights really struck to the core of what we were looking at, which was a development which was going to house our seniors with dignity and allow them to age in place. We strongly ask that you encourage that you support this. This will greatly help them to receive their other financing. And currently, the wait for elderly housing in our community is exceeding six years, which is astronomical compared to where we were only five or six years ago. This is something we need greatly, and this is a population that is very vulnerable and needs to be housed. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, David. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone want to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Any questions, councillors? Council O'Neill and then Council Grow. Council O'Neill, you are muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holden. You said 20 units of one-bedroom units. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And seniors, what is a senior? Is it 55 or 60 or 65?
Typically, it would start at 55, but there's usually some discussion back and forth about where that lands.
Okay. Is there any parking available?
Yep, so what, so the way, kind of, this is very early on in the design process, but what's designed right now is 16 parking spots on the base level as, you know, to accommodate residents and staff and visitors. And the added benefit of having the parking on the first floor is, you know, you get resilience for the building out of that because you're basically elevating the living in community spaces above, you know, getting them off street level a little bit.
Okay, so parking will be street level and the first floor will be above the parking garage?
Right.
Okay. I think I have one more question. How many stories and how high will it be? What's the height?
Yes, sorry, I should have mentioned that earlier. I actually don't have the height right in front of me, but it would be three stories total, so if you include that parking level. So it'd be pretty comparable to the building to the right of this lot, the Black Bear Barbershop that has the apartment.
So it'll be parking plus two more floors?
That's correct.
Okay, and just last one more question. Will that be an elevator?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Council Grow, you have a question?
I do. Very quickly, the first question is, what levels of affordability are we looking at for this development? But more importantly, the question I actually would like to direct to Matt, if I could. I'm a little loath, as a councillor, to come in at the last minute and parachute in with a question like this after you could spend a year doing the legwork, the heavy work. But why, in this particular case, did you, did the committee decide not to fully fund the 200,000? Given the sort of scope of the project and that, I'm just curious what the thinking was in that, whether there was some room for improvement, perhaps?
That was a two-part question. So Andrew, you want to take part one, and I'll take part two?
Sure. So at baseline, the this would be pursued as a tax credit as part of one of the financing sources, so that would require us to limit the income for the units to 60% of the area median income, based on how we would pursue it. So that would sort of be the baseline affordability, and then we would seek additional affordability to 30% for some portion of those units, based on what's available.
And as to the second part, excuse me, the decision process we went through, Jason, was the same that we did with all applicants this year. We spoke with Andrew and the Harbor Lights team and said, so what if we gave you less than your request? Would that hamper the project? Would that make it difficult? And he said, well, it's obviously not ideal, but the most important part is to demonstrate city support for the project, and we agreed that $100,000 would be a good demonstration of city support.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillors? Council O'Neill.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Grow, for asking about affordability. But I would like to know what the numbers are for 60% and the 30% you mentioned. What would actually be the rents?
Sorry, I should have that up in front of me right now, just know it offhand. Sorry, one second. So are you talking about the rental price or the income?
The rental price of the units.
So for 60% for a one-bedroom, that's about $1,000.
Okay.
And then the 30% for one-bedroom is about $600.
Okay.
The other thing to keep in mind is we would also be pursuing vouchers for units too. So that might not be reflective of what a tenant resident would actually pay if we're able to get a project-based voucher from the state.
Okay, thank you. It's we truly need senior housing, so thank you very much for doing this.
You're welcome.
Any further questions, councillors? Seeing none? I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from council member.
Thank you. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council appropriate up to $100,000 in the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to Harbor Light Community Partners, Inc. for the purpose of the Main Street Affordable Housing Project. The appropriation will be allocated to the community housing category and funded from the Community Housing Reserve Fund number 4530. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund, Community Housing Projects Fund number 4906, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by council member and seconded by council Gross. Is there a discussion? Council Memmerd.
I'd just like to observe that unbelievably, this has been 30 years in the waiting, and we've grown accustomed to being able to enjoy parking in the neighborhood of Blackburn Tavern and Nelson's and all the rest, but this is what it was meant for all along. It's a long holding pattern. And secondarily, location is actually excellent because it's just right around the block from the Rosebaker Senior Center and all the services that they would provide to the residents in this location.
Thank you, councillor. Council Worley.
Yes. Firstly, I never want to correct math from Council Memmerd, who's Chair of our Budget and Finance Committee, but 1980 was 43 years ago, not 30 years ago, so it's been a long, long time. I will be supporting this, and I just want to draw our attention to something. When the city allowed, got the permission from the state to allow parking in this space, it was councillor Foot who played a role in that, and he was on the Housing sorry, Housing Authority as the government appointee, and he also served on the Chamber of Commerce's Downtown Parking Committee, which I worked with directly. And there's nothing subtle about Gus. He made every single meeting. But don't forget that we made a promise that that's going to go back to being senior housing. So when we're counting spaces, don't count that in the long run. I think it would be remiss if I didn't share that we have a commitment to that being housing, and there will be a battle about parking that might be lost there. But it was temporary. It was never meant to be for 43 years, but it was given to the city to use temporarily. And so I'm happy to support this and just plant that seed that down the road, we have this obligation. Thank you.
Any further discussion, councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memmerd.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is project 10, Willowood Gardens Roof Replacement, the amount of $99,000. The applicant is Gloucester Housing Authority.
Open the public hearing and ask Matt Lumberg to give his report. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. This project, excuse me, we're recommending is to help replace the roofs at Willowood Gardens. It's a $309,000 project. The amount requested is the amount we are recommending of $99,000. I believe David Holden is here to speak to that, and so, David, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. David. Great, David, welcome again. Name and address, and you have three minutes to speak to us. Thank you.
Good evening again. Very briefly, we are here to request funds to assist us in replacing the roofs on the nine apartment buildings at Willowood Gardens. Willowood Gardens is a vital permanent housing option for families in Gloucester and one of the few developments that is available to families. It was built in nineteen fifty-five as Maplewood Park and was redeveloped in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one as what we now know Willowood Gardens. We seem to have a theme tonight. It has been over thirty years since the redevelopment of Willowood Gardens, and although the Housing Authority has worked hard over the past ten years so that we were replacing all of the expiring components, the impacts of inflation from the pandemic have slowed our progress over the past two years, and the roofs are not a project that we can phase over a three- to four-year period, which is what we normally could afford. So that's why we're coming for you today. As I said, this is a permanent affordable housing development with a permanent restriction under the HUD Section Nine program, and we would greatly appreciate your assistance.
Thank you so much, David. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
There are no correspondence.
Any questions, councilors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask Council Memard to do the committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appropriate up to $99,000 from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to the Gloucester Housing Authority for the purpose of the Willowood Gardens roof replacement. The appropriation will be allocated to the community housing category and funded from the unrestricted reserves in Fund 4500. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund, Community Housing Projects Fund, number 4907, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is Project Number Eleven, to renovate the Nate Ross Baseball Field, in the amount of $50,000. The applicant is the Gloucester High School Baseball Boosters.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask for Matt Lumber to give us his report.
Thank you. This is the first of our four open space and recreation projects. It is to renovate the Nate Ross Baseball Field, which is the main full-size baseball diamond in town. It's over by the O'Malley School. Their total project cost to do this renovation is $65,000, and you're recommending a grant of $50,000 from CPA funds. And I believe Rory Gentile is here to speak to the project, and I'll turn it over to you, Rory.
Great, thank you, Rory. If you would introduce yourself and your address, and welcome, you have three minutes to speak to us.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
We can, loud and clear. Welcome.
This, I'm happy to be here. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm Rory Gentile. I live at sixty-five Gloucester Ave, but for the sake of this conversation, you can assume I live at Nate Ross Baseball Field for about five months out of the year. This money and this whole entire project came about because the field has never had proper drainage installed or drainage at all. So that's where this money will be going. This is an issue first and foremost of access, then safety, and just, I'd also add a sense of pride for the city. But in terms of access, as it was mentioned, this is the only, what I'll call full-size baseball field in the city, and what I mean by that is varsity baseball teams and players are just too big and strong to play at Parisi, and beyond Parisi, there are no other options. So for us, and for me, I've spent countless hours getting that baseball field ready to play varsity baseball games and have varsity baseball practices, and while it's important in the wins and losses, it's also important to have a field that when the other team shows up, they're not scoffing at, or that when the game gets called because it's sprinkled out for about twenty minutes, you know, that they're not saying, oh, there goes Gloucester again. So the access is important, and it's not just important to us. The O'Malley Field Hockey Girls also use the field in the fall, and as you may, many of you probably have had have had kids go through the junior leagues. The junior leagues also access the field. Yeah, so it's an issue of access, safety, of course. If the field's not draining, kids are at risk of injury. And so the money will be used to install drainage, and that is sort of my whole spiel there, so happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much, Rory. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone want to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any correspondences?
There are none.
Questions, councilors? Seeing none? So I would like to close the public hearing. Wait a sec, does somebody? No? Okay, so I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Council Memard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Rory, for your work and effort on this. On a motion by myself, seconded by Council Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council appropriate up to $50,000 from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to the Gloucester High School Baseball Boosters for the purpose of renovating Nate Ross Baseball Field. The appropriation will be allocated to the Open Space and Recreation category and funded from Open Space and Recreation Reserves in the Fund 4510. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund, Open Space and Recreation Capital Projects Fund, number 5721, and I so move.
Second. Motion is made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Gross, is there a discussion, councilors? Council Worthley?
Yes, I want to thank Rory for his hundreds, no, thousands of hours of volunteering to maintain these fields, this field. I played baseball on the field back in the day. Council Gilman, when you organized a cleanup event near O'Malley School, I was happy to support that, supported whether my kids were too. And we did, we all did, pitched in to do a lot of work, but the field, there was very little litter on that field, and I don't know if you, Rory, specifically were responsible for that, but I think that the pride in the, in the school building, I'm sorry, pride in the field is contagious, and I just want to personally thank you for all your thousands of hours volunteering. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And if I could just quickly add, in terms of networking, as the, well, first assist, first player, then assistant coach, then head coach of this team, I want to also shout out, you would be shocked, the amount of people in this community that go out of their way to donate their time for things that you would never think of, whether it's welding the bottom of a second base back together, or just getting air put in a tire of a tractor that I use to make the field look playable. There's a million different things that people volunteer to help me with, and for that I am grateful, so.
Thank you, too. Good.
Council O'Hara?
Thank you. I want to thank Rory for, as Council Worthley mentioned, his energy in keeping Nate Ross Field what it is. I played on it in the late, late seventies, eighties, and it was a mud hole then. We lost, unfortunately, we lost Charles Thomas Field, that's never been replaced. That was a beautiful field, Charles Thomas, full of school, but we have Nate Ross, and that's what we have to call a full-size diamond, unfortunately, but I, you know, I will be supporting this, and Rory, I commend you for your energy and willingness to keep the field what it is for the for the students, to give them a field that they can be proud of, because it's very important to have a field that you can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes, this is definitely not fifty grand down the drain.
Huh. The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you for keeping your sense of humor. Next order of business, oh, and thank you, Rory. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is Project Number Twelve, Stageford Park Lucy Davis Pathway in the Fort Area Renovation Project, in the amount of $50,000. The applicant is the Stageford Park Advisory Committee.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Matt Lumber to give us a report.
Thank you. Our next project is the Lucy Davis Pathway in Fort Area Renovation Project. Councilors will remember that there was a prior project overseen by the Stageford Park Advisory Committee and the Department of Public Works to do a full study and design effort on this. It's to extend the pathway that exists around the harbor and to make the pathway ADA compliant, which is pretty impossible now even for most able-bodied people to climb that hill. The total project cost is $400,000. We're recommending $50,000 of CPA funds. I believe that David Benjamin is here to speak to this this evening, but David, if it's somebody else, they should raise their hands, and with that, I will conclude.
Great, thank you. David, it's nice to see you, your name and address, and you have up to three minutes to tell us about this exciting project.
David, yeah.
Introduce yourself, David Dow.
David Dow.
David Dow is here with us.
Oh, great. Hi, David.
I'm here with David. This is David and David. Let me tell you something.
Tell me your address.
Well, Bestick Street, Gloucester.
All right.
I've been here with David since six o'clock, and I've been looking at and listening to all the work that you people do, and you are all unbelievable. Sorry, Sean.
And David, David, we should thank you for your great work with all the cannon restorations, so we're very proud of you, so thank you, right back at you.
It's a great moment for us to be here and finally getting to this stage of the thing. And we're definitely going to get there. I feel a little bit of stress that this takes so long, and I might wake up some morning and I won't know the difference between a dizzy spell and an earthquake, so it's nice to be moving along and getting this done finally. I think it's going to be a great project. And I'll ask you to that, Matt has explained to you what it's all about. We've all talked about it before. But the third cannon is being worked on. That'll be ready this summer, and then we'll only have the fourth one to do, which is a really spectacular and very different cannon, makes the whole thing work out. So we certainly appreciate all the work that you do, all the support that you give us for many projects that we've done at the park, and we've got to go from here and keep on truckin', and thank you all for your help again.
Thank you so much. The two Davids, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Any correspondences or communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Any questions, councilors? Council O'Neill?
Yes, hi, Mr. Benjamin, you said that you, I think it was you, I'm not sure, that you want to make the path ADA compliant?
Correct.
Are you going to do, how do you do that with that?
They're going to readjust the grade in the plan. The grade gets readjusted from the current end of the pathway where the concrete is, all the way up to the visitor center. They make the hill less steep.
Right, right, that's, that's a project, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you're going to, are you going to, over to the cannons? What are you going to do over there?
Well, there, we're going to readjust all the landscape to make it more accessible. We're going to open it up a bit so that people inside the Fort Area can actually see out to the boulevard. There's hills there now, and they're there for no apparent reason. And people down on the boulevard will be able to look into the cannon area and see people out there. It makes it a little bit safer. The hills will be lower, they'll be flatter on the top, there'll be more room to walk around the cannons. There'll be an observation area there. It's going to look similar to what it looked like many years ago, and that, the fort actually has had many, many different designs, but we're also regrading the pathway from the welcoming center to the fort. That has to be adjusted to be ADA. So lots of work to be done, and that's why it seems like three hundred fifty thousand bucks is a lot of money, but there's still a lot of work there to make it done right. We could have got it done cheaper if we did one ADA pathway, but it didn't seem fair to do just one pathway, make people turn around and go to another area, so both will be ADA accessible, plantings and all that kind of stuff. Natural work, by the way, not really fancy stonework like you see on the other walkways where the water and everything is an issue. This is going to be more natural.
You mentioned an observation area, observation deck?
Well, not really a deck, but the top of the hills are going to be flatter. They're going to be bigger so you could stand on them. And one wall that faces the boulevard is going to be graded so people could easily walk up there and go to the end of the fort. Now, some people might not be in love with cannons. They might find guns, cannons as part of guns and that sort of thing that's so prevalent now. So some people might not necessarily want to go and look at a weapon. So they'd be able to walk up a pathway and get a better observation of the rest of the city without actually being near a gun.
Okay, so you mentioned that you're going to make the hills between the cannons lower, correct?
Just regraded, not lower, making them less steep to walk up.
So, so in my mind, right, as a historic fort where we fought off the British, those hills were, they put the cannons in the, in the land, so they weren't really hills, they just put the cannons in the land, and the hills protected the soldiers. So to me, that doesn't make sense.
Well, they are lower, and they're about as low as they were at one time when it was a Civil War fort. At another time, as a Civil War fort, to be historically correct, correct, the entire fort was walled off. You wouldn't be able to walk in there if we did that. It would be completely isolated from the public. So obviously, we don't want to make that happen. We want it to be more open, and right now, when you walk by the cannons, you almost have to sidestep a little bit. There's not much room there, so it's being widened out so it'll be more accessible.
All right, one more question. If someone else has a question, and then we'll go back to you. Anyone else have a question? Seeing none, okay, last question, councillor, so we can call the question. Go ahead.
There are little, there are little stone steps within that fort that they stepped on to climb the hills. Are you touching those at all?
I think those are going to stay, but they'll be moved a bit. I think those are going to stay, but they'll be moved a bit.
Okay, are you going up, um, beyond the cannons, like into the rock? Like up into tablet rock and, uh, touching that stuff?
No, the funds, uh, we stopped there at the cannon. That's in the next phase of our plan. We'll be going that way, but, uh, not right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, councilors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Counsel Memard.
Okay, this one and two more to go. Thank you, David and David. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act funds recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to the Stage Fort Park Advisory Committee for the purpose of the Stage Fort Park Lucy Davis Pathway and Fort area renovation project. The appropriation will be allocated to the Open Space and Recreation category and funded from Open Space and Recreation Reserves and Fund four, five, one, zero. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund Open Space and Recreation Capital Projects Fund, number five, seven, two, two. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, second by Counsel Worley. Is there a discussion? Counsel Nolan?
I'd no discussion more than a comment. Um, Dave and Dave in the Stage Fort Park Advisory Committee work really hard with very limited funds. Um, I'm very happy to be supporting this tonight and I, I can't thank them enough for all their work. Even when committees weren't meeting, uh, Dave and Dave still managed to hold things together and work with all the groups involved with Stage Fort Park to make it better for everybody in the city. And I, I can't thank the two of them, uh, enough. Um, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, counsel. Um, and the, um, Counsel Gross?
Yeah, I just, uh, I piggyback on Counselor Nolan's remarks there. You know, this has been, uh, I don't know, it's over a decade, um, in the making of all this stuff. So these guys really need to be commended for having, you know, an eye for the law and the patience to go through the, uh, all of this and stick to it and have a, a vision that, that is, that we can, we can do our best to help them see through. So, thank you too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Counsel Worley?
Yes, I have the strangest collection of books and my parents' house too. And one of them is the nineteen twenty-six inauguration speech from the mayor at the time saying Stage Fort Park could be such a gem if we took care of it and get it more accessible. And so I think that predates both of you actually, nineteen twenty-six. But, um, I know it's been a long time coming and I'm so pleased to see this step being taken tonight and I'm proud of all the work you've been doing. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussions? Seeing none? Roll call vote. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Absolutely. Thank you, David and David.
Yes's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you both for so much work that you do. So much appreciated. And thanks for being here since six o'clock, hanging out together.
That's still unbelievable.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
This is project number thirteen, the Stage Fort Park Playground Rehabilitation. In the amount of fifty thousand dollars, the applicant is the Gloucester Rotary Club.
Like to open the public hearing and turn to Matt Lumberg again.
Thank you. Yep, this is, uh, the, uh, third of our, um, uh, Open Space and Recreation projects. It's to rehabilitate, um, a major piece of the Stage Fort Park Playground. Um, the applicant is the Gloucester Rotary Club. Um, this is a wonderful project, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. The CPA request and recommendation is for fifty thousand dollars. I see that there are quite a few people here from the Rotary Club who have been here all night. Um, and I'll, uh, leave it to whoever raises their hand to speak to it.
Anyone like to speak in favor of this application? I see Stephen Katie. Come on, wel- welcome, Stephen. Would you, um, introduce yourself and your address and we'd love to hear from you for up to three minutes. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, this is Steve Katie, five Viking Street, Gloucester Rotary Club. This is the Rotary, Rotary Club's Centennial Project. Uh, what it entails is two additional spaces. Uh, being connected by, uh, ADA pathways. Uh, one of them is going to be where the swing set, the infant sets are now. Those will be removed and there will be another set of infant swing sets with two swings. And then this parent-infant swing that a parent and an infant can swing together on it. So that's one area. The other area is going to be where the slide and, and base of the seesaws are. Those will be removed and we will be putting in a new pirate ship that's a lot larger and a lot more accessible for toddlers and kids the age of five as well as kids that are slightly over that age compared to the main area that basically is for older kids from like six on up. And that's the scope of the project. The retaining walls for both are going to match the large area retaining walls. And we hope to get this thing done by hopefully next summer.
Thank you, Stephen.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for, um, for staying here so late. Appreciate all your work. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Um, Mary Ann has her hand raised. Mary Ann, come on in and tell us your name and address. You have up to three minutes.
Mary Ann Albert Boucher, ninety-three Mount Pleasant Avenue. I would like to thank the Rotary and thank the CPA Committee for putting this forward. Anything to help the children of the city to upgrade our playgrounds and their play surfaces is a giant thumbs up from me. Um, we look around in the city. So much of what we see is deteriorated beyond belief. And it is time for all of us to take an active role in repairing, replacing, and upgrading all of our cities' playgrounds and fields. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Joe Schalino has his hand raised. Welcome back, Council President Joe Schalino. You have up to three minutes. Introduce yourself and your address and speak to us. Thank you. Can you unmute yourself, Joe?
Yes, did I unmute? Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear, yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to mention that, uh, you know, the Rotary took over the park. And when Rotary International was a hundred years old, uh, we did that project and we spent up to around three hundred fifty thousand dollars and still maintain it. So that, that's our phase one. Uh, what we're proposing also now is phase two. And, uh, and what makes it dire is that a lot of the equipment that's there now, uh, is out of code. And, uh, and, uh, and then it needs to be replaced as soon as possible. So we are, we are taking that on as our hundredth anniversary project once again. And we're in the realm of, uh, two hundred thousand dollars that we're trying to, uh, uh, that we plan on spending. Um, when, uh, when we did phase one, we got awarded, uh, the, one of the best children's parks on the North Shore. Um, and now I think when, once we do phase two, uh, and, uh, you know, that, we, once again, we'll be up for that award. Um, just, just to note is that, uh, we take care of the property, we watch over it. And, uh, as you know, broad scope of, uh, the Rotary, we take care of the gazebo. We take care of the phase one of the park and now phase two. So thank you for your consideration tonight. Uh, the money will go, uh, will be spent very, very well. And it's, again, it's going to put smiles on the children of Gloucester using that park. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joe, for all your volunteerism. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone want to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences on this matter?
None.
Counselors, any questions? Um, Counsel Majota and then Counsel O'Neill?
Uh, no questions. Um, this is just amazing. Um, the park is in desperate need of new equipment. Um, bring in my children there. Um, and it's just, you know, tourists come to Stage Fort Park and they see the park and this is just going to change everything. So I fully support this. I'm excited for it and I can't wait to see it. Well, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Counsel O'Neill, questions?
Yes, hi, I think it was, um,
You are muted, um, Counsel O'Neill. Thank you.
Just, thank you, I just realized it. I think it was, um, Stephen Katie who said the retaining walls are going to match the current retaining walls. Is that correct?
Correct.
What, where are you putting new retaining walls?
In where the seesaw slide currently is. That's going to be, that's going to be leveled out and we're going to put, if you want to call it the surrounds, those concrete surrounds, similar to the main area.
Yep.
Would, would be there and also where the infant swings are.
So you're going to put a, a retaining wall around the, where the slide and the unused seesaw things are?
That's being re-
What, what are you gonna put?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Are you going to take out the slide and the old seesaw metal? What, and were you going to put something? That's where you're going to put the infant swings?
The infant swings are going to be, uh, across from that where the current infant swing is, which are probably seventy years old.
Okay, so where are you gonna, what are you gonna put?
What we're going to put in where the slide and the seesaw area is, we're going to make that one large area and put in what I want to call a synthetic pirate ship, which is probably around thirty feet long, has like three slides in it, a full deck in it. Uh, unfortunately, I thought that slide was going to be brought up to you, you folks, but it wasn't.
Um, are you removing the old ship?
Yes.
Okay, um, hold on one second. Um, are you gonna, have you, have you given any consideration to the trees? Cause, um, I, I looked at the trees, I look at them and they, they look like they could use some kind of, I don't know, fertilizer and trimming or something. Have, have you, have you looked at the, the trees? They look like they could use some help, not in the winter.
I'd like to suggest that we, um, refer that to Mike Hale because he oversees the trees in the city. So maybe you could, um, you could put that in as a request to the mayor. Does that make sense?
Sure, um, I do have like, I have the request of, of the Rotary Club and, um, I guess maybe so. That slide, that's a good slide and, um, it's fast, it's fun and I don't know why you're taking that out. I think it's a really good thing to have. Um, and I'm sorry to see that go.
Can I suggest that you take that offline?
Um, okay.
That would be great.
Okay, so, so what should I do? Stop, call Stephen Katie?
Well, I, I, there's probably issues of safety and things like that, but I would say that, that it's a question that you could follow up with.
So how do I do that?
You could, you could call me at Strong if you want.
Call you what?
At Strong, Love the Company.
Oh, okay, um, do you want to give me that number or should I?
Sure, just two eight one thirty three hundred.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, so we have another hand raised. So, um, we're at council questions right now, but I think I'll do is, um, allow, um, Dr. Michael Suraf to come in and, um, if you would introduce yourself. Um, so we're doing a little, this little bit out of order, but without, um, exception, I, I would like to ask that we, um, allow Dr. Suraf to, uh, speak. Would you introduce yourself and your, um, and your address? Thank you.
Good evening. This is, my name is Dr. Michael Suraf. I'm the president of Gloucester Rotary Club. I live in Six Pollock Drive, Middleton, uh, Mass. Uh, sorry that it's getting too late, so I'm not going to hold you guys up. Um, to answer your question, uh, Counsel O'Neill, we did meet with, uh, Michael Hale from DPW and like you mentioned, uh, Counsel Gilman, there is a safety issue with that slide. That's why we kind of like opened up our playground going toward the water. Um, and all those equipments are going to be removed. So we did, uh, Steve Katie and I, including Michael Hale, we met at the site of the, uh, location, um, of the playground and we verbalized all that stuff and we all were aware that those need to be replaced. So we got his blessing and Mayor Verga's blessing. So I'm not going to hold everybody up. So thank you very much. And, uh, uh, Counsel Margarita, that we actually, I live in Middleton and I bring my children from Middleton to come to Gloucester to play with the, uh, playground. So I can vouch with you. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for your leadership, Michael. We appreciate it. Um, so we're at council questions. Any further council questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask Counsel Memard to do the committee report.
Sounds good. Uh, on a motion by myself, Counselor Memard, seconded by Counsel Worley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to the Gloucester Rotary Club for the purpose of the Stage Fort Park Playground Rehabilitation. The appropriation will be allocated for the Open Space and Recreational Category and funded with unrestricted reserves and Fund four, five, zero, zero. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund Open Space and Recreation Capital Projects Fund, number five, seven, two, three, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worley. Is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Absolutely.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes, thank you, Steve, Katie, Joe Schalino, the entire Rotary Club.
The yes's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much. Final order of business in this section of the agenda. Madam Clerk?
It's project number fourteen, conversion of the Stage Fort Park Basketball Court into a street hockey rink. The amount of fifty thousand dollars. The applicant is Young Legends Street Hockey, Inc.
Like to open the public hearing and ask for the report from Matt Lumberg.
Thank you. Uh, our last project of the evening, uh, recommendation, it's for the final stage, hopefully, of the Stage Fort, uh, Street Hockey Rink that Young Legends Street Hockey has been so diligently, uh, pushing for over the years. Um, with us tonight is Carl Ellis and Carl, I see two entries for you on the Zoom participants. So if you could raise your hand so we, we promote the right one, that'd be great. Total project cost six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, at this stage, uh, we are recommending a fifty thousand dollar grant from the CPC. And, uh, I will turn that over to Carl for further presentation.
Great. Carl, um, introduce yourself and your dress and you have three minutes to speak to our council. Thank you for your patience. It's been a long night for you, I'm sure.
My pleasure. Um, thank you, everybody, for having us. My name's Carl Ellis. I'm the president, founder of Young Legends Street Hockey. Um, resident five Bray Street, Gloucester, Mass. Um, just want to say thank you to the CPC Committee. They've been great over the years. Um, Counsel Nolan, Counsel O'Hare, Counsel- Um, Council Nolan, Council O'Hare, Council Worthy, uh, we've worked closely together over the, over this project, um, over the last couple of years. So again, thank you and thanks for, uh, taking the time to hear our speech tonight. Um, right now, the rink is waiting patiently to be completed with, uh, the install, the boards. And if you guys drive up there, the surface of the tile has arrived. It's waiting for us to install that and, uh, we'll be moving forward it, with it, um, over the next two months. And then we should be opening, um, the rink to be functional in April of this year. So it's a very exciting time for, uh, our, our organization, the city, especially with all the events of the 400th. So, um, we're, we're really excited. So we're now sort of, we're starting to raise money for the second phase of the rink, which would be your amenities, which are all the other privileged things such as the lights, which is what this money is allocated towards. Um, we've been through a lot of adversity with this project with COVID, uh, inflation prices, inflationary prices, things like this. Um, but, uh, we're getting close to see the end and, uh, finally getting some kids as well as adults like yourselves out there with a stick in your hand, enjoying the facility. So, um, again, thank you. Thank you for all your support. Uh, we as an organization appreciate it and, um, thanks again.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any?
There's another Carl Ellis that raised his hand that, um, you missed about speaking in favor.
Okay, Carl Ellis, do you have another Carl Ellis, someone using another phone in your house that might be a different person?
It could be my dad.
Okay.
Could be. If he wanted to speak, I don't know.
You want to bring him in, Joanne, in case he does?
Okay, so because he's using the name.
You want to allow him to talk?
I can, but I have to promote him to a pianist. Oh, there he goes. Is that the thing?
I just, I just brought him in. Sorry. Right, okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Carl, if you would introduce yourself and we'd love to hear from you for up to three minutes on this project. Thank you.
Um, my, my name is Carl Ellis III and, um, live at Five Bray Street, Gloucester. Um, yeah, I've been involved in the project, um, the wonderful project. And, you know, um, it's good, my son Kyle was, you know, the pioneer, you know, he's had a great organization and he asked me to help him, you know, design this rink and, uh, it's finally coming together and we appreciate all the support on the CPC. And thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Carl. Anyone else like, anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone want to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is, are there any, um, correspondences?
There are none.
Are there any questions, counselors? Um, Council Grow and then Council O'Neil.
Sorry, quickly, um, I understand that a lot of the time that the, the rink is going to be used is, is through the organization. Will the, will the rink be available for, for people to do pickup games or, or at times when the rink's not being used for organized, uh, team sports?
Uh, absolutely. I, I hope that many people will take advantage of the rink. Um, like I said, we, we want to offer programs, so it's inclusive for everybody. But, you know, if it's, if it's, you know, a, a beautiful day up there and taking the sights and play up there, it's, it's open for anybody. And we originally wanted it to that, to be that way to, to, uh, part of that counselor is the fact that hockey has become so expensive from an ice hockey perspective that ball hockey and street hockey are a way to, you know, get more kids and like I said, more people into the game. So absolutely.
Thank you.
Great question.
Thank you, uh, Council O'Neil.
Thank you, um, so, uh, Young Legend, Young Legends.
Council O'Neil, you are muted again.
Sorry, thank you. So Young Legends Street Hockey will maintain the schedule? They'll schedule games and stuff?
So what we have is an agreement with the city that we will have a schedule for our organization to util, when we, when we want to have our programs to utilize the rink. But any other time it's available for use.
So how would, how would I know? Will it be posted online? Probably, right?
That's a great question. We're still working out the details with that with the DPW. So what will, what will happen is, is like quarterly, we meet with the DPW and kind of like very similar to like the, uh, the Little League field where, you know, anybody can go on those fields and utilize them. Um, we have talked to the DPW about potentially having a schedule on our website or on the City of Gloucesters website that anybody could utilize. So, and it would be nice to have both of those systems communicate with each other, but, um, that's still in the works, council. Good question.
It, and amenities, um, what kind of amenities were you talking about?
Yeah, so like a, like a scoreboard, um, bleachers for spectators and, uh, and then the lights, like, cause in my humble opinion, the rink is, you know, the, the priority, the surface and the boards and having a place to play, but it's, it's a privilege to have lights and a scoreboard and those extra details.
And bleachers as well, right?
Bleachers, and bleachers as well, yeah. There's also, um, there's also an ADA ramp that allows, you know, um, we're very proud of this. We, we actually launched an adaptive program for, 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 for adults and children with special needs to enjoy the game. So when we designed this rink, uh, Mike Hale had suggested building an ADA ramp so, um, people can get down to the rink a little bit easier. So, um, little things like that to make a difference.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, counselors? Uh, Council O'Hara.
Uh, when, when are you expecting to have your first tournament?
Uh, so that's a really good question, Counselor. We, uh, so we, this is right kind of in the, we're working with the 400th Committee to host a Gloucester celebration and it will be, uh, this is actually, um, talking to Isabel Pett and, uh, Bob Gillis about uh, potentially it'll be a celebration in October, um, where we'll have a, a men's and a women's, and then we are talking to the Bruins to come down and do a free clinic for kids. So, uh, that'll be part of our uh, contribution to hopefully to the 400th birthday party and, um, but that's, that's what we're shooting for. It's, it's a lot of work to get this, these things off the ground. So that's what we're shooting for.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions, counselors? Seeing none, like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Council Memard.
Sure. Look, Carl and Carl, I just, I remember the first time you pitched this at the Budget and Finance Subcommittee and we're seeking funding and support and Mike Hale was there advocating with you. So you've, you should be applauded for all the ground you've covered and the progress you've made. It's wonderful that we're here now.
Thank you.
Uh, Budget and Finance, on a motion by myself, Counselor Memhard and seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted in three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council appropriate up to $50,000 in the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide funding to Youth Legends Street Hockey, Inc. for the purpose of the conversion of the Stage Fort Park base basketball court, basketball court into a street hockey rink. The appropriation will be allocated to the open space and recreation category and funded from unrestricted reserves in Fund 4500. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund, Open Space and Recreation Capital Projects Fund, number 525720, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memard and seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors? Council Nolan and Council Worthy.
Uh, Carl and Carl, I, I, I want to thank you both for your patience and your dedication. Um, I remember having a meeting with you guys, uh, just about seven years ago. Um, with your first and talks with the city. So it's, it's been a long time coming and, uh, I'm really proud of you for everything you've done and I can't wait for this to open up. This is going to be a great asset for the entire city, all, all ages and genders. Thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Worthy.
Yes, I just want to say to both Carls, your enthusiasm is contagious. I know that you have worked hard individually, but your team approach and your whole entire team has been remarkable in their advocacy for this and you've overcome a lot of hurdles, some of them you shouldn't have had to overcome. Um, but I'm glad to see the vision come to reality and be part of supporting this. So congratulations, you should be very proud.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none. Uh, roll call vote? Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes, thank you, Matt and the entire CPC committee.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. And yes, thank you, Matt. Job well done and to your team. Great job.
Everybody, uh, we've got a great committee and we're looking forward to 2023. And I'll just add one more thing. Um, we have our, uh, informational, our new CP plan update will be out in a couple of weeks. And, uh, we'll probably have our informational hearing at our February meeting on February 21st where, uh, interested, uh, applicants can learn a lot more about the whole process. So thanks again for all your help.
Fantastic job.
Great, thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is a memorandum from the City Clerk requesting City Council set September 19, 2023 as the municipal preliminary election date.
Um, I moved to set the September 19th, 2023 as a date for the City of Gloucesters Municipal Preliminary Election.
Second.
Oh my gosh, I got three. Did you guys, well, I, I think I heard Council Nolan, yes? Did, did, I heard part of it. Okay, so Council Nolan will get the second. Um, any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, um, Madam Clerk, do you have anything to add on that matter right now or was that the only thing that we needed to, to do there?
That's the only thing to do at this moment, um, on the next presentation, I can go further into local elections.
Okay, great. Um, we have no more. Oh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the City Clerk presentation to City Council on the 2022 elections, including debriefing ways and how the City Council can support the voting process in 2023. So I am, I believe my presentation has been in the packet and I will share my screen. I'm going to. Okay, so this is just a debriefing of the 22 elections. Okay, so, um, impactful changes.
We don't have, we don't have the screen share.
You don't?
No.
I'm screen, um, sharing my screen.
I don't, I don't see it. Does anybody see those screen share?
I see her screen.
2023.
Yeah.
Do you want to, you gotta open it.
Yes, I did.
It's not open.
Okay. And let's see. Hold on a minute.
You might be in a different tab.
Yeah, let me just close out of this one. Stop that one. You see it now?
We do. Yay. Okay.
I had to. Okay, I had too many things open. Okay, so this is just a debriefing, okay? The impactful changes, the Votes Act. Voter registration is now held from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the 10th day before the election. This change results in the voter registration deadline following on a Saturday for any election held on a Tuesday. And I quoted the Mass General Law. Prior to this change, the deadline was held on the 20th day before Tuesday election, which resulted in a Wednesday deadline. Early voting is mandated to be held six days preceding a biannual state primary and 12 days preceding a biannual state election, including one weekend for cities and towns with a population between 5,000 and 24,999,000 as amended by the Votes Act. Gloucester currently has 22,483 registered voters. Vote by mail is required for municipal elections unless the City Council votes to opt out. Early voting is not required for municipal elections unless the Board of Registars votes to opt in and City Council would need, um, authorization and we need a City Council vote. And the City Council would have to vote, um, for, you just can't take one vote for both elections. We would have to take two votes, one for the preliminary and one for the municipal election. So I want to go into voter turnout. So on September 6th, 2022, the state primary voter turnout, the total number of votes cast, which were inclusive of early voting, absentee voting, vote by mail and vote in person was 5,780 or 25.68% voter turnout. 153 early voting in person was 2.6%, 3,655, uh, requested vote by mail ballots, which was 63%. Of those who requested vote by mail ballots, 891 requested vote by mail ballots but did not return the ballot and did not vote by any other means, which equals 24%. 170 requested vote by mail but did, voted at the polls on election day was 5%. 1,061 or 21% of the vote by mail ballots were not returned. Prior to the state primary turnouts, um, the 2014, you could see the 27.90% 97% voter turnout. The state primary in 2016 was 10.32% voter turnout. The state primary in 2018 was 18.94 voter, uh, percent turnout. And the state primary in 2020 was 39.55% voter turnout. And this was the first state primary with early voting in person. It was not the vote by mail. Okay, so the next slide. So on November 8th, 2022, state election voter turnout, the total number of votes cast inclusive of early voting, absentee voting, vote by mail, vote in person was 13,398 or 59.07%. 650, 656 early voted in person, which 4.8%. 6,204 requested vote by mail ballots would equal 46%. Of those who requested the vote by mail ballots, 518 requested vote by mail ballots but did not return the ballot and did not vote by any other means is 8%. 320 requested vote by mail but voted at the polls on election day equaled 5%. 838 or 13% of the vote by mail ballots were not returned. Prior state elections turnout was state election 2014, 53.2%. State election 2016, 78.36%. And this was in 2016, the first state election with early voting in person. Um, state election in 2018 was 63.35% and state election 2020 was 81.73% voter turnout. Okay, now we're going to go to the expenses for the city. So staff overtime costs on September 6th, 2022, the state primary, 33.5 total overtime hours. This is non-management. It would be, um, office staff, the reunion rate was 1,611 and 48 cents. office staff, the reunion rate was 1,611 and 48 cents. Overtime, overtime paid for staff for one Saturday of early voting, September 6th. Uh, 2020 state primary was $635.10. This is 57.7 overtime management staff, zero. That means, um, myself, the City Clerk and my, the Assistant City Clerk do not get compensated for overtime, um, for elections. So that was just that one election, um, Bryce and I worked 57.7 hours of overtime without being compensated. On November 8th, uh, 2020 state election, 35.25 total overtime hours, non-management was $1,563.92. Overtime paid for staff for two Saturdays of early voting for November 8th, 2022 state election was $878.27. And 48 hours overtime staff, miniature staff, which means City Clerk and Assistant City Clerk, uh, was a zero compensated at 48 hours. Vote by mail costs, the cost to mail one ballot, vote by mail is 81 cents. The cost, labor cost per vote by mail is two to $4, uh, per ballot, depending on the staff member. Time to process a vote by mail ballot is approximately 10 minutes. So on September 6th, 2022 state primary, at least 10 minutes per ballot, the labor cost to fully process 2,594 ballots was between $5,188 to $10,376. Um, I think in this, um, cost, we included, uh, the rate of the City Clerk and the Assistant City Clerk because we contributed those hours in getting the vote by mails off, uh, out. The labor cost to partially process 1,061 ballots were not returned. At five minutes per ballot was 2,000, uh, $2,122 to $4,244. On November 8th, uh, 2022 state election, at 10 minutes per ballot, the labor cost to fully process 5,366 ballots was $10,372 to $21,468. The labor cost to partially process 838 ballots that were not returned at five minutes per ballot was $838 to 1,676. Okay. Did that. So, uh, according to the, um, chapter 92 of the Acts of 22, a Mass General Law, chapter 5472, a police officer was assigned to each polling place for the duration of the election hours, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, until all the ballots were counted, packed and returned to City Hall. The police officer escorted the constable vehicle to the return, for the return trip to City Hall. The cost for the September 6th, 2022 state primary election for police details was $8,292.2. The cost for the November 8th, 2022 state election police, uh, detail in every polling place was $7,776.25. Also, we had a post-tabulation, which meant that any overseas ballots that came in before, um, by the deadline needed to be, uh, post, uh, needed to be counted, hand counted at a post-tabulation on November 15th, 2022. And then that was, um, the cost for the police detail was $192.12. Okay, election worker costs, the election worker cost covers the positions of wardens, constable clerk, inspectors and vote by mail checkers. So these are our, uh, poll workers. So September 6th, 2022, the state primary election, the cost for poll workers was $12,620. On November 8th, 2022, the state election, the cost was $13,300. Okay, so early voting staff, um, we are fortunate in Gloucester that we have, um, a community of volunteers that step up when we, we need them for early voting. So the September 6th, 2022 state primary election, six days of early voting, regular business hours was 124, 124.75 volunteer hours at no cost. On November 8th, 2022 state elections, 12 days of early voting. Uh, week one reduced hours, week two, regular business hours was 191, 25 volunteer hours at no cost. If not for the volunteers, the city would have spent $1,777.68 for the six days of early voting for the September 6th state primary. And $2,725 for the 12 days of early voting for the November 8th, 2022 state elections, if we had to pay them minimum wage. Um, I do want to mention that we are, I think, one of the few communities that people volunteer. Um, residents volunteer to staff early voting in person. Most of them are poll workers and, um, we didn't have the funds to, um, to pay them for early voting. And that might change in this fiscal year budget because we found, um, sometimes, um, we couldn't get some of the volunteers, but people did step up this time. Okay, reimbursement. The City Clerk's Office will be requesting reimbursement through the Mass Division of Local Mandates, DLM, for the following reimbursable costs. The postage for September 6th, 2020 state primary is $2,960.55. The postage for the November 8th state election would be $5,025.24. The staff overtime for Saturday early voting hours, $635.10 for September 6th and $870.27 for November 8th. The custodian overtime for Saturday early voting, um, September 6th is $373.14 and November 8th, um, overtime for early voting, um, would be $715.19. The City Clerk's Office will be requesting reimbursement through the Mass Division of Local Mandates for the following of potential reimbursable cost is to be determined by, um, the Division of Local Mandates. They required us to put this down, but that's no guarantee that will be a worse for these supplies. It's vote by mail supplies, $276.46 and postage meter supplies of $271.81. So now we're going to go, the comparison graphics of the voting process as it relates to the City Clerk's Office as a result of vote by mail. So before the vote by mail, the voter checks in the polls, the voter marks the polls, the voter deposits the tabulator. In this slide, it will tell you the complete process that we have to go through for vote by mail, just for one ballot. And as you can see, it's, the first phase is we complete application, entered into the red, uh, the state system and file, uh, and it's filed and it's pending audit. And then we audit sheets and print out from the state system to compare with the applications. The applications are filed alphabetically by warden precinct. The labels are printed and affixed to three separate envelopes in each ballot kit. Uh, the kits are sealed, uh, and posted. Ballots are entered into the state system as mailed and brought to the post office. The ballot is returned, envelope is stamped with the date and time and delivery method. And then phase two, the signature is verified or challenged. Uh, the envelope initialed or, uh, verified by the staff member. So that means your signature has to match the, um, when you sign your ballot, that gold envelope that people have to sign, it ha, the signature has to match the application that you sent in. The ballots are entered as received and filed alphabetically by Warden Precinct and they're put in the vault and locked. And the phase three vote by mail report is printed out for each Warden Precinct. The ballots are cross-checked to report to ensure accuracy. Ballots are packed for police delivery to the polls. And the last phase is the ballots are checked in, opened and fed through the tabulator by an actual election officer on Election Day. And that is my presentation.
Thank you, Jill. So can you, um, can you share with the councilors? Um, what, um, what is your ask from us? Like, what do we need to do to support you with these? Um, some of them are unfunded mandates. I mean, what, what, what is it that you need us to do to help your team?
I do, I do wanna, you know, say when it's a local election, the cost is, um, about 90% on the, um, city. Um, this year we would have to pay for ballots. We would have to pay for the police details, which we paid for last year and, um, I'm still looking for funds to reimburse the police department on that. So the question would be, would this council, I don't know what the consensus is on the vote by mail, if people like it, if people do not like it. Um, I do know this new election law takes away from the everyday, from the day-to-day duties and is getting more and more challenging. Okay, so, um, I could see both sides of vote by mail. Um, so this year you do have an option to vote out if you choose to. Um, early voting in person, um, you have to opt in. So it's really up to the council. Um, we are mandated to do all this work. Um, the only, um, relief we would have if you didn't want to opt into the early voting in person. And we would just concentrate on the vote by mail, which is mandated unless you opt out.
When do you need these decisions to be made by us?
Okay, so there is, I believe. Okay. Uh, we have to, to opt out for a local election, the City Council must hold a public hearing in a public roll call vote, not to not allow vote by mail at least 45 days before an election. And a separate vote would be required for, um, each election, like I, as I previously said.
So that would be somewhere before July 1st?
Um, the preliminary would be 45 days. It would be like, um, August 5th, if we did the preliminary on September 19th.
Okay.
Okay, so, and then, and then to opt in, I just want to say we are, one of our board of registrars, um, has resigned. So, um, we're waiting, um, for a nomination from the Democratic Party because the person who resigned is Democrat. So we have to have, um, them nominate and then it's a mayoral appointment. So right now I would be a board of registrar with the two other remaining board members if they wanted to have a meeting, if you wanted me to call a meeting to opt into early voting by in person. And that is done closer to the election day. I think it might be, um, 15 days before the election.
So I want to make a suggestion then, we'll open it up for questions, but my suggestion would be, we should have a separate meeting on this and spend more time reading the material that you gave us and looking at what the other municipalities have done. So maybe you could set up a little bit more, some links for us to read, to understand more in these slides. Um, so we can really have a fresh look at this because right now we are all really tired. And, and I think some of this information is really worthy of rolling up our sleeves and looking at it to make some wise decisions that makes sense. But looking at data and trying to understand it when we've been, you know, here for four and a half hours is, is a, you know, so we just, um, without objection, councilors, are you, are you, do you think that, that in a special meeting just on this one topic would be helpful, just so we could be really fresh and, and be prepared?
I'm up for that.
Okay, so why, why don't we do that? And in the meantime, how about in the, and just so we could be time sensitive right now, um, send questions to Joanne of the types of things that would be helpful for us to be able to read about. Like I, I'd love to hear from, I'm sure you have reports from your City Clerk's group about how this all went and all the different municipalities, stuff like that would be really helpful. So we can kind of peer members with them and anything you, you think that would be helpful for us to help you make the right decisions. Have a meaningful.
The only, um, town that I know of right now that opted out of, uh, vote by mail was Danbus because they have in their annual, um, election, uh, coming up. And there was a, a survey shortly after the November election, who would, who would opt out for vote by mail or not for vote by mail. And that indicated the majority of the towns. Um, cities, for some reason, when you do a survey like that, they don't answer. But the majority of the towns are going to do, um, vote by mail. Um, early voting, it was 50/50 on whether they would offer early voting, but that was an early survey. I couldn't ask to see if there's an updated survey from the mass, uh, city and town clerks. And see what it, but I, I do know that I was talking to the PBID City Clerk and she's the one who told me that Danbus, this board of selectmen voted to opt out of vote by mail.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. Um, so, so let, let's get one question each from everybody and then we can, um.
I did, I just wanted to mention also, I was waiting for this vote in order to calculate the days and do a timeline on when the City Council had a vote for opting out of voting, uh, vote by mail or opting in to, um, early voting in person. And early voting in person, uh, for local elections does not require Saturday hours unless the council votes for it. And, um, it would just be during our business hours.
Okay, so maybe what you could do is give us a list of all those things that we need to, to have votes for. Right? And, and then kind of a timeline and, um, so we can look at some research and kind of absorb it and then, and we'll have a separate meeting and people can send you questions that they might have um, in preparation. Um, council, is, is there anything else other than that, Joanne, that you need from us? I know we, we should all reach out to you on where our polling place is going to be, right? For example, I think you know that we, we're moving back from Plumco School to Lanesville Community Center. Right? So we'll need to get all that processed and geared. But, you know, ward councilors, you need to work with Joanne to just talk about any issues with polling stations and start to work on that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have a conversation about Ward 1. Because I am trying to get some information about, um, the new school. Um, I'm told it's going to be up and running by September. Um, because we'll have to move the 1-1 polling place in East Gloucester. If the, the school is closed and we're not going to be able to use that for this year for polling. So I'm trying to get some information from the school, uh, building committee um, about that because that's going to impact um, a polling location. And then we have to notify, um, council's got a vote on the location. I have to inform the state of the City Council. And then we're going to have to notify the registered voters of that ward of the polling, uh, location change.
Okay. All right, so, um, one question each from everyone. Uh, Jason, you had your hand up first.
I probably could find this myself. I'm, I'm curious the historical relevant, our reasoning, why we have off-year elections for local elections? Is there any way that we can move elections so they're on the same biennial, biennial sca, schedule as the federal elections and the state elections?
Um, it's my understanding that, um, it's a Mass General Law for cities and towns, the, oh, for cities, okay? For towns, they can have their annual elections and they go by their bylaws. So I believe it's, it might be the charter driven, I, I have to say. But then after we're going to run into, um, cities have November, September primaries and November elections. And you're going to run into, where are you going to do? I don't know if we can do a local election on a state election or presidential. So I'm not sure about that, to be honest with you.
So good, good question. So let's get the questions to Joanne and, um, and we'll come up with a date for meeting. And then Joanne, give us all the things we need to vote on. Does anybody else have any questions? and then Joanne, give us all the things we need to vote on. Does anybody else have any questions before we um, get to the final order of business? Um, Council Gross.
You think this requires a special meeting? I don't think so.
Well, I mean, it, it certainly, I, I don't think it's gonna benefit us.
But let's try to figure out how to not have it be a special meeting, that's all.
Fine.
I have no problem with that, but we're gonna have to, I, I, I don't think it's fair to Joanne to wait till the end of a meeting, because it's gonna be it's just, I, I'm feeling pretty fried and this is really important stuff for us, so um, I guess we'd have to do a presentation early in the meeting to discuss these things. If you didn't want to do a special meeting, in my opinion.
Yeah, not every meeting has fourteen CPA.
That's true. That's true. It's fine. Okay.
I think it can be during a regular meeting sometime in the next three months.
Yeah, we, we postponed it from the last, the last meeting with I think it was um, yeah, from the last meeting, for some reason we postponed it because we had the other matters up. So we postponed it to this one and not realizing that the CPC was, was up on it too. But I just wanted to give you an overall and also what the council would need to do.
Maybe you can apply for some CPA funding for. But seriously, what you could do for us is to, is to put together a realistic budget of what you really need in terms of, of resources to do the job as it is now, and then we could figure out from there, because it's clear you're not, you don't have the resources that you need and you need more people to be doing more things and that costs money. So how, how do we figure out how to do that? And I think we should.
Actually, we were pretty good in our budget, uh, Council Grow until June came out and they come out with all these mandates that our budget was already over. So we were prepared for um, you know, to put all the costs in the budget. I, I will say that um, the city has to absorb the cost of um, mailing out the vote by mail. But um, the return ballot, the state is paying for that.
Okay, um, Council Worthley, your hand is up, so go ahead.
Yes, I move that we extend our meeting with hope so we don't use much more time to eleven-thirty. I think we're fast approaching the five-hour mark.
Um.
Was it four hours? Seven o'clock.
Wasn't our meeting at six o'clock?
Six. Our meeting is at six, yeah.
Old fashioned, so.
Okay, um, so it's a motion. Is there a second? I second it, um.
There's always one.
Um.
I don't think we can finish him.
I'm kidding.
Okay, so, uh, O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yep.
Memard.
Nolan.
Yep.
Aiden Schaver, um, one opposed. Um, okay, so let's just wrap up, okay? Um, so let's go around and do our request to the mayor and um, I think everybody understands um, what Joanne will do to help with this, and I think the consensus was you want to include it into a normal meeting and questions need to go to Joanne and come up with some budget overviews of what the ideal um, numbers look like, okay? And if you have any other things, just send them to Joanne. Um, so um, request to the mayor, oh, um, Jamie, um, Council O'Hara.
Sure, I just have um, one, the, the release of uh, surge uh, from the sewer system. I'd like to get a tally of how many times this has happened in the year two thousand and twenty-two. The volume of it and what the corrective action is, how, how these things are happening. We, we obviously aren't informed of this. Um, we should be, because now we're getting the calls from the recent article in the paper. Also, I wanna thank um, um, Officer Mike Scola, S R O Scola for uh, his article on cops and kids that uh, that made national, national periodical, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Um, Council O'Neil, any requests?
Uh, yes, your suggestion, I'd like to ask through the mayor that the DPW um, assess, nourish and trim the dead branches of the trees at Stage Four Park. I think that's important. And then that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Worthey.
Yes, I've got a few. I'm gonna fly through them as quickly as possible. Uh, this recent storm, I think I wanna, I wanna commend the DPW. It was a strange storm, the way the weather shifted and, and they did a fantastic job. Um, we, I think Council Memhard, Gilman, myself, and Council O'Hara at different points have asked questions about the creek as recently as um, November twenty-first. And we received a report, or the city of Gloucester received a report on November second. And we didn't get that until last week. I would like to have a presentation to the public in here and potentially if the public asks questions or we ask questions to get some answers, because that's twelve weeks ago that we got that report and the city got the report. We didn't get that, so that's number two. Number three, um, I would love to have a brief presentation from your group, this meeting regarding MBTA. Uh, it was reported on social media that there was a fifteen-minute delay at the gates being down. But the results actually from Keolis was that there was sixty minutes plus on Sunday and forty minutes, forty-four minutes on Monday, the gates were shut down, and we're lucky it was the winter and not with summer beach traffic and other traffic that would have delayed um, emergency response. So I'd love to have another presentation to see where those things stand. Um, let's see, I'd like to get, offer congratulations to Detective Mizoney, who just retired after illustrious career as a detective in the police department. Um, we learned, we learned it at our B and F meeting, but we did an agenda, consent agenda of the B and F uh, votes, so I wanna draw that attention to that. On Friday, I had to pay a visit to the emergency room. Um, I'm okay now. Thanks for everybody who was concerned or who knew, didn't know about this. But I wanna just express gratitude that we have a hospital that is as close as it is and as capable as it is. Um, and the last one, I just, we really thoughtful how I say this. I wouldn't be discussing it if it weren't gonna be news in the next forty-eight hours. But regarding the situation that I'm dealing with, with court, I just wanna just make a very clear announcement. I wanna thank everyone for being as fair and positively um, treating me uh, fairly throughout this process. But the judge did make a decision, uh, ruling came in today, um, a hundred percent in my favor, and I don't wanna gloat. I just wanna make that known in the sense that you'll know about it in social media and media, I'm sure, in the next day or so. Um, and that's it. I'm glad to get that part behind me. Thank you all.
Um, Council Gross.
Um, I, I did have um, a um, request that I had put in for the fire and police chiefs to um, you know, determine alternate routes for workarounds on traffic delays, particularly around the gates, but I talked with Chief Smith. And they already have all those protocols in place, which I should have thought of anyway, so I withdrew it. Um, and um, the the overflow on the sewer, if you drove by the pump station at Hart Street yesterday, you would have seen that they'd had multiple pumper trucks every tide since I worked there in the early nineties has had infiltration into these um, into the system. And I think the only cure is if we dig up the entire sewer system and replace all the pipes, that's gonna be the cure for it. So it's no big mystery of why it happens.
Thank you, Council Grow.
Uh, only that uh, the mayor uh, uh, do whatever he can to give Joanne the resources that she needs to run fair, full and fair elections for this city. So that's it.
Thank you. Council Majota.
Um, I can email the mayor all the requests that I need to.
Thank you. Council Memard.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Council Nolan.
Yeah, I'd like to put a request into the mayor um, to see if he can do something about the loose shopping carts in Ward Two. Um, they seem to be an issue and they need some nutrition.
Nutrition.
Okay, interesting. Um, and I have a request to the mayor. I'd like to um, have a meeting with um, our harbor master and our DPW and police chief with um, our C A O to go over the issues that came up in October of two thousand and twenty-one at my ward meeting. So we can, um, Jamie, what's the problem? Are you, is something funny? What, what are you laughing at? Oh.
I have to commend Nolan for being such a comedian later, late in the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I don't get it.
Now we're seeing shopping carts.
Oh, now I get it. Okay, that's, that was funny, Sean. Thank you for your sense of humor. Um, so anyway, so I would like to uh, to be able to meet and, and go over those. We were in a transition from one administration to the other back then, and I worked really hard to get answers and not all the answers were clear. So I'd like to um, get my arms around that and make sure that we're set up for the summer um, in the Corliss Landing area, so um, without further ado, um, just to let you know, Council Worthey, go ahead.
I just wanna congratulate you on the position.
Go ahead.
I just wanna congratulate you on your position through the MMA organization, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the title off the top of my head this late at hour, but I know you um, earned the support of the MMA organization to have a leadership role there, so thank you for that and congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, Council Grow.
You can uh, rule me out of order on this, I, but had Council Worthley not brought it up, we wouldn't be discussing it. While his court case may be done, we haven't been speaking on this issue because we've been prevented by the lawyers from doing so. I am not entirely sure I'm comfortable with the, the actions that led up to the en- entire situation. I'm not sure that we're completely done with this as a council. And I think that we, we.
That's fine.
I just wanted to give the heads up. Whether or not, whether or not appropriate behavior by counselors in school grounds is, is something we should be worried about.
Yeah, you might be creating another lawsuit here, but go ahead, Council Grow. Thanks.
I believe that we're talking about an issue. You wanna, you wanna, you wanna fire away, go ahead, but.
I'm not fired away. You must be tired. I don't wanna.
I'm not tired, Jeff. I can go all night.
So let's um, so um, let's um, let's end the meeting and remember that on um, Thursday night, I've got a ward meeting at six o'clock at Lanesville Community Center. And for the rest of the counselors, if you can be so kind to um, give me a heads up, the ward counselors, when you plan on having a meeting, that would be really helpful to me. Um, because I'm a little bit concerned that if the other counselors don't have meetings scheduled, my meeting is gonna be really crowded and already I'm coordinating, I'm taking both Ward One and Four, Four One and Four Two, putting it together in one meeting. And um, I'm not gonna say no to anyone in a different ward that wants to come, but it's really a ward meeting. And um, so if the rest of you could come up with your dates, that would be great. And um, let's um, thank you so much for your um, patience tonight. And uh, thank you specifically to B and F, to Scott, to Jeff, to Tony for all your hard work and preparing for this and um, that's it. So let's um, is there a motion to adjourn? No, turn.
They're moved.
Second.
Um, O'Hara.
Yes.
Jamie, you asked me once just to say the last name, so I'm gonna do that right now, just in your honor. O'Neil.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
I guess so.
Nolan.
Yes.
All right, the meeting's over. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Joanne.